Very much for coming and being here on time. So it has finally stopped snowing. The birds are chirping madly. The peepers, toads, and other froggies are serenading raucously. And so it is that time of year again. I hereby call to order the Town of Carlisle Annual Town Meeting of April 30th, 2018. Good evening. My name is Wayne Davis. I am the Town Moderator. Thank you for coming and supplying a quorum. I have inspected the return of service of the warrant and determined that it has been properly served. Can I have the consent of the meeting to waive the reading? Any objection? Hearing no objection, the reading of the warrant is hereby waived. Some basic housekeeping. The fire exits, they are to your left at the front, that's to my right, at both the front and the rear of the auditorium. If we do need to evacuate the room, then I will adjourn the meeting until tomorrow evening at 7:15 in the same location. For folks in the cafeteria, the fire exits are also in the right and left corners. If you've got your electronic devices with you of any type, please turn off any ringers or sounds and so forth. And I realize I probably didn't turn mine off, but maybe let's all take a moment now to do that. Okay. Now, I would like to begin by asking each person on the stage to introduce him or herself, and we'll start with the Town Clerk.
Charlene Hinton, Town Clerk.
Claude Von Roskin, Selectman.
Ethan Brown, Board of Selectmen.
Lucas Calillo, Board of Selectmen.
Kate Reed. Kate Reed, Board of Selectmen.
Gary Kissinger, Vice Chair, Selectmen.
Scott Triola, Finance Committee.
Tom Smith, Finance Committee.
Jim Dar, Finance Committee.
Victor Liang, Finance Committee.
Lynn Lipinski, Finance Committee.
Mike Bishop, Finance Committee.
Thank you. And we could have the lights from the stage. Oh, in back here, I'm sorry, please.
Tom Harrington, Town Council.
Tim Goddard, Town Administrator.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to recognize Luke Escolillo, the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, to make a few remarks.
As is traditional, at the beginning of every town meeting, we would like to recognize both retiring employees and citizens who have decided to resign from various committees. So I'm going to read through that list now. So Claude Von Roskin, thank you. Three years on the Board of Selectmen. Melissa McMorrow is retiring from the School Committee after serving two terms for a total of six years. Jennifer Hawes is resigning from the Lyme Disease Subcommittee after serving two years. Melinda Linquist, also from the Lyme Disease Subcommittee after serving a year. Sally Zalinski is resigning from the Board of Registarians after seven years of service. Kathy DeVivo Ash is resigning from the Council on Aging after serving three years. Jean Sane is resigning from the Council on Aging and the Board of Minuteman Senior Services after 16 years of service. Barbara Bjornson is retiring from the Housing Authority after three years of service. Alan LeHotsky is also retiring from the Housing Authority after 19 years of service. And Andrew Beal is retiring from the Gleason Library Trust after three years of service. And Town Employees. We have John Flaherty, who is retiring after 15 years of service as a Deputy Superintendent of Finance and Operations for the CC Regional School District and Public Schools. Elizabeth Camille Barnett retired after 11 years of service as the Housing Coordinator. Kathy Horan retired after 23 years as a school nurse. Carrie Wilson is retiring after three years of service as the Middle School Principal. Eileen Blanchett is resigning after two years in the Town Clerk's office. And last, but of course not least, retiring after 15 years of service as a Town Clerk, Charlene Hinton.
Thank you. On to procedures. So those of you who have been here before, I hope will appreciate I'm not going to go through the long list of procedures about town meeting. I'll just highlight a few of the most important ones. To those of you who are first timers here, welcome, glad to have you. If you've brought your blue town warrant book, there is a little bit more detailed summary of the town meeting procedures, starting at page 36. And if you really want to geek out on parliamentary procedures, you can go on the town meeting webpage, I'm sorry, the Carlisle Town website, there is a link on the left to the town meeting page, and then you'll find all sorts of stuff to keep you entertained. You may have noticed on the slides running before we started this evening that we are soliciting feedback on this evening's town meeting via an online survey. I'll read you the website URL, and then we'll put it up again later at the end of the meeting. So that's tinyurl.com/tm-feedback-18. So, speaking here at town meeting, we have microphones, you can see the numbered microphones in the aisles and at the back, number three is back there. If you can, please move to the microphone in advance of requesting to speak. If you're caught in the middle of the row and it's just your time, you need to hop up and ask to be recognized, that's okay, but please try to move out in advance if you can. When I do recognize you, please state your name and address. Our meeting is being taped, as well as live streamed tonight, so each time you speak, you must identify yourself and your street address. By the way, so welcome to those of you who are watching now in real time or on tape delay on CCTV. And we also, courtesy of our retiring selectmen Claude Von Roskin, we're live streaming on YouTube. So welcome to the 21st Century Carlisle. Yeah, this is going to make me like the second most viewed personality on YouTube who grew up in Reading, Pennsylvania. And I will offer a free drink to anyone who can figure out who is the most viewed personality on YouTube who grew up in Reading, Pennsylvania. So, our time limits for speakers. Eight minutes for the main presentation, three minutes for comments from the floor. However, as we've done the last few years, FinCom, when presenting the budget, since it is such a major and complex thing, does get 15 minutes. When you do speak, you kindly address your comments to me rather than to anyone else who has spoken. Next item, the cafeteria. As usual, we have set up the cafeteria to accommodate parents with small children. To help with the procedures in that room, I have appointed Vanessa Maroni of 142 Bedford Road to serve as Assistant Moderator and have sworn her to that position. We do ask that people in the cafeteria conduct themselves similarly to those in the main room, at least to the extent you can with a small child in tow. Vanessa, let me check in with you now. Can you hear everything all right?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
And do you have anyone there?
There are three of us.
Great. Okay. So, for those of you in the cafeteria, if you'd like to speak, it would be best if you could make your way to the back of the auditorium, and I'll recognize you there. If for some reason you'd like to, you can't come to the auditorium and you need to speak from the cafeteria, that's fine. The Assistant Moderator will just let me know that you'd like to speak and will get you in. Voting. So, most of the time, we will just do it by voice vote, because everyone likes to get a little expression out, so you're not sitting totally quietly the entire evening. If I am in any doubt as to calling the vote, then I will ask you to, I'll do a show of hands, or actually it'll be show of cards. Everyone who checked in should have received one of these blue voting cards, just makes it a little bit easier for me to see. Does every registered voter have a card? Okay, very good. And then if I'm uncertain as to the show of cards, then we'll move to a counted vote with the tellers. Guests. Do we have anyone in the auditorium who's not a registered voter here in Carlisle? Could I see a show of hands? Okay, well, if you could just move down to the front, we do ask, David, that the non-voters get down there, so it just makes it easier for the tellers. Thank you. Non-voters are not allowed to address the meeting without prior consent of the meeting. However, typically, we do hear from non-voters who are employees, volunteers, or advisors to the town. May I have a motion to permit the following persons to address the meeting? Non-voter-appointed members of any town or regional committees or task forces, non-voter employees of the Town of Carlisle, including the Carlisle Public Schools, and non-voter management employees of the Concord-Carlisle Regional School District and Town Council. May I have such a motion? And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. If any of you non-voters do want to speak in another context, you may only do so upon further motion and consent of the meeting. Okay, now that we've covered speaking, let's talk about listening. If anything interferes with your ability to hear, see, or otherwise participate in the proceedings, you may interrupt the meeting with a point of privilege to request that we rectify the situation. Also, please know that we do have special handsets down front and to your right if anyone needs a little extra amplification of sound. About ending the meeting. Relative to some prior years, we've got a shorter warrant than usual, so we will probably be able to finish up tonight, but that will be up to you. By Carlisle tradition, we do not take up any new articles after 10:00 PM. However, if we're close to finishing and it's approaching 10 o'clock, then I'll do a check-in at that point and see if we just want to push through and finish tonight. In any event, if for whatever reason we don't finish tonight, then we will reconvene tomorrow evening here at 7:00 PM. Let me pause at this point and ask, are there any questions about our procedures? Okay, seeing none. I now recognize Mr. Tim Goddard, our Town Administrator, to provide the annual reports town meeting on the Patriot Act.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moderator. By vote of a prior town meeting, I'm required to report to you at this time regarding the Patriot Act. And I can report to you that no residents of the Town of Carlisle have been detained or otherwise questioned with regard to any elements of the Patriot Act. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I now recognize Mr. Escolillo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Excuse me. I move that town meeting hear reports from the Master Planning Committee and the Pathways Committee, not to exceed 10 minutes for the two reports combined.
Okay. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Escolillo, could you please explain why you're making this motion?
So both the Master Planning Committee and the Pathways Committee approached us. Obviously, you know, they both have long-term projects and larger-scale projects coming up over the next few years. You know, this is the first master planning process that we've done in a very long time. So we thought it was important to get some of the information out of there.
Okay, so just so everyone understands, we just have a procedural motion. Normally, we have our standard article, which you can see is Article II, Town Reports, where the town meeting accepts the reports, meaning that we agree they've been submitted, and we don't normally actually hear an actual report from the committees. But this is a request that we hear, two special reports, not to exceed 10 minutes. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor of hearing reports from the Master Planning Committee and the Pathways Committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. I recognize Melinda Gambino. I understand you'll be taking five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. It's great to see everyone here. I'm Melinda Gambino. I'm here to talk about the upcoming efforts to address pedestrian safety in Town Center and the proposed Phase Two expansion of the pathway system in Carlisle. Since the installation of the pathways 10 years ago, pedestrian risks have changed substantially, especially on 225 heading in and out of Town Center. Traffic volume has increased, speeds have edged up, and since the launch of the iPhone distracted driving can be added to the list of risks. So it's not surprising that over the last few years, we have seen an increase in pedestrian and traffic incidents over the last few years. We now know that more needs to be done to address these risks. Carlisle's Traffic Safety and Advisory Committee intends to undertake a traffic engineering study in the very near term to identify these risks and the nature of these risks and ways to mitigate them at three sample crosswalks on Bedford Road. The guidance coming from these studies will then be applied to other existing crosswalks in Carlisle and to any future construction undertaken as part of Phase Two of the Pathways Initiative. So, this map shows the pathways that were installed in Phase One. It involved the installation of roughly 2.5 miles of pathways radiating out from Town Center along the five main arterials seen here. The small portion on Westford Road actually represents an installation that was done in collaboration with a developer outside of Hanover Hill. Phase One was completed 10 years ago. For Phase Two, the Board of Selectmen convened a new committee to evaluate and recommend extending the pathways in order to increase access to Town Center and to improve pedestrian If approved, Phase Two would be expected to add approximately six miles of pathway in one-to-two mile segments over a period of years to the already-installed pathways. The location, the priority, and the funding would be coordinated within the master plan, the Commonwealth's Complete Streets Initiative, and the Traffic Safety and Advisory Committee for Carlisle. So what does a completed pathways project look like in a few years from now? The ultimate vision involves expanding the pathways along the five main arterials, adding to the pathway system that's already been installed. So this represents about six miles of additional pathways. So what is the role of pathways in our community? The pathways function to provide a safe, direct, walkable route to Town Center. The pathways are a complement to our existing robust trail system. They would increase access and create loops and connections. Pathways will improve safety. Bedford Road has been identified as a priority because of the increase in traffic volume and the frequency of pedestrian use. But as I mentioned earlier, any new project would seek to minimize crossings and seek to address crosswalk safety up front in the engineering design. So in Phase One, pathway funding came from multiple sources: Town capital, CPA funds, and Chapter 90 funds. For Phase Two, the Pathways Committee would also seek to leverage multiple funding sources. We would hope to initiate a private funding campaign. We will continue to work in conjunction with the Planning Board to identify opportunities to collaborate with developers. There will likely be a Town capital request. But we are also actively pursuing funding to complement our town resources in planning the expansion. So in particular, infrastructure grants are available from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So we're looking at the MassWorks Infrastructure Program under the Small Town Rural Assistance portion and the Complete Streets Program. The Board of Selectmen has initiated the process of adopting a complete streets policy, which would then make Carlisle eligible to apply for construction funding. So these infrastructure grants could provide partial funding for the construction efforts in Phase Two. It's also likely that a funding request for pathways will be coming before the town next year. This represents an investment in the infrastructure of our town. The funding request would have an impact on taxes, but that impact would be finite. The pathway installation in Carlisle, however, will have a lasting and transformative impact on our lives and how we live in this community. It connects us not only to destinations and places, but to each other. The Pathways Initiative moves forward in the context of unfolding Complete Streets efforts, our Traffic Safety and Advisory Committee's guidance, and the master planning efforts. It has a well-formed vision and process around it because of the earlier work done in our town. The overall master planning process, however, is just getting underway, so I'll now turn it over to Jan Corneal, Chair of the Master Planning Steering Committee, to talk more about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Corneal?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name's Jan Corneal, and I am the Chair of the Master Plan Steering Committee. Thank you. On behalf of the committee, I'm going to give an overview of the Carlisle Master Plan: what it is, what we hope it will be, why it matters, and how you can get involved. Carlisle's a great place to live, but we're at a crossroads of being able to support and pay for the things we want to achieve as a town. When we depend so heavily on a residential tax base, there's a limit to how much we, as a community, can manage. The articles from the mosquito illustrate a range of topics that are being discussed and underway in town. So as a community, we need to reflect on our successes and challenges and chart a path forward together. Many of you might ask, what is a master plan? Carlisle hasn't done a master plan since 1961. There was an update in the early 90s, but it's been an awfully long time. A master plan's a public process that results in a guiding document that creates a shared vision for the future of the town and a roadmap that sets targets and metrics, so it's measurable, our progress will be measurable, and so that we can prioritize our needs and assess our progress as we go. The master plan process allows us to discuss the range of interests and issues and needs and opportunities that various interests care about in an integrated way together. And the master plan will be actionable and comprehensive, and it will address both short-term As an example of our approach to the master plan process, the committee started to consolidate a list of topics that fall loosely under four general categories: economy, community, environment, and governance. This is a list, this list is a work in progress, and our job is to engage with the town's boards and committees and with the broader public to add change, refine this list. So we capture all of the important topics that the town faces now and will face in the The master plan process will include a robust community engagement process, where people can participate in thinking and in an integrated way to weigh the pros and cons, the benefits and challenges of efforts we as a town wish to pursue. An example of this might be the efforts we just heard Melinda speak about. Can we build and maintain a pathway network that allows for better pedestrian and bike access? If we do, what topics do we touch, and can we seek to solve by doing so? A pathway network in Carlisle will improve and activate the Town Center. It will improve access and reduce our carbon footprint. It will tie into and improve the connections between our recreational facilities, our school, our trails, and it can improve safety and make Carlisle a healthier place to live. Another example: can we find a sustainable use for the cranberry bog that financially viable in the long run, improves the town's recreational amenities, while embracing land conservation, water management, and our agricultural goals? For example. The master plan will inform town policy. It will guide decision-makers and inspire members of the community to participate in Carlisle's ongoing improvement as a sustainable community. The master plan will incorporate the goals and priorities of all the boards and committees and help them coordinate their efforts, instead of sometimes working at cross purposes. The master plan will help our Board of Selectmen, our Finance Committee, our School Committee prioritize investments over multiple years. And finally, and perhaps most importantly, the master plan process is a forum for the citizens of Carlisle to discuss our town's challenges and explore new ideas as a community. There are several phases to the master plan that will take place over the coming 12 to 18 months. The first phase has begun. We're reaching out to town committees and boards, we're here tonight, and we're organizing a community forum, and we'll be undertaking surveys. The second and third phase is where we look at analyzing the town, recording information and data, visioning, developing strategies and policies. We're likely going to have to hire a planning consultant to help us do that, and we're currently working to refine estimates of how much this will cost and how long it will take, with the hopes of getting the go-ahead from the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen and getting to town meeting in the near future.
Please do wrap up. Thank you.
This will result in a guiding document and a process for measuring progress and undergoing regular updates. So, we are organizing a workshop Monday, June 18th, 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Save the date. None of the details are worked out yet, but we hope to see you, your families, your friends join us to imagine together a promising future for Carlisle. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're now ready to begin with the business of the meeting with Article One, the adoption of the Consent Agenda. Article One is essentially a procedural rule under which we would vote on Articles Two through Seven, inclusive as a single package. If we adopt Article One, then I will call out each article in turn. If you have a question about one of the items on the Consent Agenda, or if you wish to object to any particular article being included in the Consent Agenda, please say "hold" in a loud voice when the number is called. If you simply have a question, you'll also get an opportunity to ask it. If you want the article removed from the Consent Agenda, the article will be removed automatically, restored to its original place in the warrant, and to be debated and voted in the usual manner. Any questions about that? Okay, I recognize Mr. Escolillo. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Brown. Who's doing it?
No, it's me, but we had it as Articles Two through Eight. And you said Two through Seven.
Did I say Two through Seven?
You did.
I misprinted my notes.
Yeah.
Two through Eight. Thank you for the correction.
Please do, please do. Well, you've got nothing to lose, right? All right, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that Articles Two through Eight be considered in one motion, and that the motions for Articles Two through Eight be hereby adopted as printed in the motions booklet.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Both the Board of Selectmen and FinCom voted unanimously to recommend adoption of Article One, as well as each of the main motions under Articles Two through Eight. Do any other boards or committees have voted recommendations on any of Articles One through Eight? Okay. With the consent of the meeting, I will divide the question, so that we will first consider whether to adopt the Consent Agenda procedure. That'll be the first vote, and then the second vote would be to consider the adoption of Articles Two through Eight. Is there any objection to the Chair's ruling to divide the question? Seeing no objection, the question will be divided. Seeing no objection, the question will be divided. Okay, so the first question is, do we want to do the Consent Agenda? Any debate on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say "Aye."
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously, and I so declare. Now we move on to Articles Two through Eight. And again, if you'd like to discuss it separately or have a question, simply say "Hold" when I call it out. Those of you in the cafeteria, just press the red button and say "Hold" at the appropriate time if you want to join in as well. Article Two, to hear the town reports. Article Three, setting the salaries of elected officials. Article Four, the actuarial evaluation of post-employment benefits. Article Five, revaluation for the Board of Assessors. Article Six, the real estate tax exemption. Article Seven, the fiscal year 2019 Chapter 90 authorization. And Article Eight, setting the department revolving funds authorizations. So, no holds on any of these articles, so we will move right to a vote. So, this would be for the adoption of Articles Two through Eight inclusive. And, actually, we do not have any two-thirds votes on this one this year, correct? Okay, good. Normally, we sometimes do. So, this is just a majority vote. All those in favor, please say "Aye."
Aye.
Any opposed, say "Nay." Motion carries unanimously, and I so declare. Article Nine establishes budget transfers for fiscal year 2018. I recognize Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to transfer sums of money into various line items of the fiscal year 2018 operating budget, from other line items of said budget, from unexpended funds in various accounts as printed in the motions handout.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Brown?
This article is a housekeeping that permits the town to transfer funds from light items that are running a surplus into line items that are running in a deficit.
Okay, thank you. Recommendation from Board of Selectmen?
The Selectmen voted unanimously to support Article Nine.
FinCom?
The Finance Committee voted unanimously to support Article Nine.
Thank you. Do we have recommendations from any other town boards or committees? Okay, seeing none, floor is open for debate. Anyone wish to speak to Article Nine? Seeing none, we can proceed right to the vote. This is a majority vote to establish the budget transfers for the fiscal year 2018, which is the fiscal year we are completing right now. All those in favor, please signify by saying "Aye."
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously, and I so declare. Article Ten is to rescind a previously issued, I'm sorry, previously authorized debt that has remained unissued. Mr. Ascolillo?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to rescind $204,000 in authorized and unissued debt as listed in the motion booklet.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Ascolillo?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So this, the first one, the septic management program, some of you may know, we had a loan program available to, basically, residents could borrow from the town if they were redoing their septic. It turns out, nobody actually used that in the past three years, or four years, or five years. And then the cistern thing, look unclear as to what the cistern. Okay. All right, so the town had authorized $60,000, authorized us to borrow up to $60,000 for a cistern, and we only used, we only borrowed $56,000. So that $4,000 needs to go back as well.
Thank you. Recommendation of the Board of Selectmen?
The Selectmen voted unanimously to support Article Ten.
And Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted unanimously to support Article Ten.
Do we have any recommendations from any other town boards or committees? Okay, any debate on Article Ten? Okay, seeing none, we can proceed right to the vote. This is a majority vote. All in favor, please say "Aye."
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously, and I so declare. Now we move on to Article Eleven, the fiscal year 2019 operating budget. I recognize Mr. Triola.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that a total of $29,810,389 be appropriated for fiscal year 2019 as set forth in the columns entitled FY 2019 Budget in the chart accompanying this motion. And to meet this appropriation, that $75,000 be transferred from free cash, that $53,000 be transferred from the ambulance fund, that $297,730 be transferred from the overlay surplus, that $14,945 be transferred from the stabilization fund, that $34,623 be transferred from the reserve fund for bond premiums account, and that the balance be raised from the FY 2019 tax levy and other general revenues of the town.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. I recognize Mr. Triola. You have 15 minutes.
On behalf of the Finance Committee, I will be presenting the fiscal year 2019 budget. I'll be moving quickly through a lot of numbers tonight, and I encourage you to refer to the town warrant for additional detail. In particular, the budget letter on Page Two summarizes most of the information I am presenting tonight. Please note that an updated Table One is available as a handout. This updated table, my presentation, and the Article Eleven motion reflects a small reduction in the high school budget that was approved and conquered earlier this month. In summary, the total budget recommendation for fiscal year 2019 operating budget is $31,083,716, which represents an increase of 4% over last year. And to clarify, that's the total budget. As a matter of policy, this budget assumes passage of all warrant articles being voted on tonight. When we account for expected town growth and fund transfers, the average residential property tax increase is estimated to be between 2.2 and 2.8 percent. The recommended budget is balanced and requires no override. The budget includes an estimated excess levy capacity of just under $1.9 million and maintains recommended financial reserves. The Table One handout presents a summary of this budget with additional detail. The budget recommendation is the culmination of a comprehensive and collaborative effort that began back in September. The process began eight months ago, when the Finance Committee issued its initial budget letter to town department heads, boards, and commission chairs. Our preliminary guidance this year again was a 0% budget increase in department budgets with allowance for salary increases related to cost of living adjustments and contractual obligations. Once the budget letter was issued, we scheduled meetings with town departments and committees, and met with each individual group to review and discuss their budget requests. From October through December, the Finance Committee met with nearly all town departments and committees to review their budget requests. We also began coordination meetings with the Board of Selectmen to update them on our progress and incorporate their input and priorities into the budget planning process. Based on these conversations and our own deliberations, the Finance Committee issued the fiscal 2019 budget guideline in December. This guideline included specific budget totals for each town department. Once again, we invited any parties with budget requests not included in the guideline to meet with us as we worked to finalize the budget recommendation we are voting on tonight. After regular meetings in January, February, and March, and working in conjunction with the Finance Director and Board of Selectmen, we finalized our budget recommendation. Prior to this town meeting, a public hearing was held to provide additional details and answer any questions from the public. While tonight we are focused on what is included in the budget, I would like to know that over $350,000 in operating budget requests were not included in the budget recommendation. This includes budget requests, both large and small, spanning several town departments. I want to take a moment to thank the departments and committees, Finance Director and Town Accountant, for the effort they put into this budget process each year. It's a truly difficult task for the Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen to balance the individual needs of these committees and departments with the overall town budget and the tax burden placed on residents. In a balanced budget, revenues are equal to expenses. Let's take a first look at revenues. The mix of revenue sources in the fiscal 2019 budget remains similar to last year. The biggest change is that fund transfers is approximately double the amount of fiscal 18, and I'll explain this in more detail shortly. As you know, Carlisle is heavily dependent on residential property tax, as we have a minimal commercial base and we receive very limited state aid. Final state aid and local receipts for fiscal 19 are not yet known. Our assumption in this budget is that these will remain unchanged from fiscal 18. Focusing first on residential property tax. The expected impact on the average residential bill is shown on this slide. The average home value in Carlisle is $810,000, and the estimated average total tax bill for fiscal 2019 is estimated at $15,354, including the 2% CPA surcharge. This represents a total increase of $395, or 2.6%. This is an estimate only, as we do not yet know the final state aid amounts, final local receipts, or changes in home valuations. The final property tax rates for fiscal 19 will be finalized in November. Moving on to fund transfers, in fiscal 19, we are recommending $200,000 be used in free cash, as shown. This budget also includes $353,000 in transfers from the ambulance fund, $300,000 of which will be used for the ambulance replacement included in Article 12. Note that money in the ambulance fund comes from ambulance receipts and not taxes. The budget also utilizes $298,000 in overlay surplus, which was released this year. Overlay funds are used for tax abatement and exemptions, and unused overlay funds are released back to the town. This release is exceptionally large, as overlay funds were held and built up pending the outcome of litigation against the town. This litigation has been settled in the town's favor, and therefore, these overlay funds are being released. Based on the recommended fund transfers, the expected remaining free cash balance plus the stabilization fund balance of just under $1.2 million results in total town reserves estimated to be $3.4 million at the end of fiscal 19. The recommended budget leaves us with reserves estimated at 10.8% of our total town budget. This is right in the middle of the recommended range, which is important for a variety of reasons, including maintaining the town's high bond rating. Moving on to the expense side of the budget, the general breakout of operating expenses is relatively unchanged from fiscal 18, though insurance, benefits, and retirement has increased as a percentage of the total budget. The amount of capital appropriations and warrant articles has also doubled from last year, primarily due to the ambulance replacement included in Article 12 and Article 13 municipal facilities, which will be discussed later tonight. Debt service also includes $200,000 in first-year principal and interest payments for the communication system that was approved at last year's town meeting. Additional expense details on the budget for individual departments can be found in Article Eleven in the warrant. In this year's budget, I'd like to spend a few minutes on the topic of wages, as wage and wage-related expenses make up the majority of the overall budget and are driving expense increases across all departments. Of the total $30 million town budget, approximately 70 to 75% is wages and wage-related expenses. Each year, contractual and non-contractual wage increases for existing employees increase the total town operating budget by approximately 1.5 to 2%. Insurance and benefits and county retirement expenses are also seeing another large increase this year, combining for an increase of $242,000. These are not optional or discretionary expenses. Outside of OPEB contributions, insurance, benefits, and retirement must be fully funded. Wages and wage-related expenses account for a large share of the annual town budget increase, and this is just to maintain level service. This leaves very little available budget headroom to pursue new town projects and initiatives. Achieving sustainable budget growth demands that we identify and implement operational efficiencies to provide town services, including education, in a more cost-effective manner. This has been an area of focus in fiscal 19 budget planning process and will be a priority for the Finance Committee next year and likely for years to come. In coordination with the Board of Selectmen, we have implemented a more coordinated and disciplined staffing process for town departments that require any staffing or wage increase to be approved by the Town Administrator, Board of Selectmen, Personnel Committee, and Finance Committee. We also continue to look closely at staffing and where adjustments can be made to further drive operational improvements and efficiencies. Included in the fiscal 19 budget is the addition of an assistant treasurer-collector. This position will offload much of the time-consuming transactional work from the Finance Director and allow more focus on collections. This will also provide the Finance Director with the bandwidth she needs to realize recurring town savings through more long-range budget planning, proactive management of healthcare plan options, and management of the town's $12 million OPEB liability. In addition, we have also included funding for a part-time facility manager who will be working with the town's Chief Procurement Officer and Facilities Committee to manage a comprehensive, long-term, and much-needed maintenance plan for town buildings. This will enable the town to better manage maintenance funds, avoid costly emergency repairs, and realize project cost savings through the coordination of projects across multiple buildings. Third, the budget includes funding for a regional housing consortium to provide technical expertise to the town as part of a more cost-effective and coordinated approach to affordable housing. On the benefit side, the Finance Director is leading an effort within Minuteman and Shova Health Group to implement health plan changes that we expect will mitigate some of the increase in plan premiums borne by the town and our employees. In addition, we establish an OPEB trust that is expected to positively impact our OPEB liability going forward. While we expect these efforts will realize long-term cost savings, the rising cost of insurance and benefits is not expected to abate anytime soon. These changes represent initial steps in a longer-term effort to provide needed town services in a more cost-effective and sustainable manner. Change is not easy and not always popular, and we will need your support in this effort, starting with tonight's budget vote. Education expenses sees an overall decrease of 0.7% in fiscal 19, which is further broken down into a 2.4% increase for the Carlisle Public School operating budget, a 3.7% decrease for the high school operating budget, Carlisle's share of the high school operating budget, and a 39% increase in vocational education, which is primarily due to one additional student expected to attend vocational school next year. Let's take a look at the budget for the Carlisle Public School. This slide presents the overall budget trend for the Carlisle School. The blue bars show the annual total budget, and the red line shows the percentage budget change each year. Over the past five years, the budget has an average growth rate of 2.8% and a 10-year average growth rate of 2.3%. The Carlisle fiscal 19 budget maintains level service, and this slide shows one view into how the Carlisle School budget is allocated by the Administration and School Committee. The allocation of expenses in fiscal 19 is stable relative to fiscal 18 in previous years. Just under 80% of the budget is spent on wages and expenses directly associated with classroom instruction and special education, as represented by the regular education and special education categories. An additional 8% is spent on support services directly impacting students, including transportation, library, health, and psychology services. The negative number you see for grant and fee offsets includes monies received for state circuit breaker reimbursements, grants, and student fees. The Carlisle School budget has been approved by the School Administration and School Committee. Moving on to the high school. The total fiscal 19 operating budget for the high school is $29.1 million, which represents a 3.8% increase over last year. This budget number includes the total cost to Carlisle and Concord combined. The high school budget maintains level services and includes benefit and retirement costs. Looking at the five-year trend, the average annual increase has been 4%. Concord approved their portion of this budget in their town meeting on April 9th. This budget was This budget was also supported by the Regional School Committee and Concord Finance Committee. Carlisle's assessment of the total budget is based on the percentage of students we have enrolled there. This assessment has seen a decreasing trend since fiscal 13, and in fiscal 19, we are seeing a significant decrease in our allocation from 26.5% to 24.5%. This allocation decrease results in a 3.7% decrease in Carlisle's portion of the high school operating budget. Our portion of the high school debt service is also decreasing. In the longer term, we expect Carlisle's assessment ratio to remain relatively stable, though there will be individual up-and-down years, which adds additional variation to this large budget item. The significant decrease we are seeing this year should not be considered a recurring savings, as we may see allocation increases going forward. This slide shows the budget allocation for the high school overall. For those interested, much more detail on the high school budget is provided in the Superintendent's Budget Proposal and in several presentations and reports provided by the Regional School District and Regional School Committee. In looking at fiscal 19 and beyond, I want to highlight a few key points. First, Carlisle has limited avenues for increasing revenues, as we are dependent on residential taxes, and town growth is expected to remain low. Budget pressure will not ease. Wage and benefit expenses will continue to drive budget increases across all town departments. Town buildings will require significant investment over the next several years. This will be discussed in more detail when we get to Article 13. School debt service will remain at peak levels for the next several years, and payments for the communication systems have also begun. Given these pressures, we must remain focused on limiting the rate of increase in expenses through a thorough and disciplined budgeting process. We must be very judicious in our management of human resources, and we must find ways to provide required town services in a more cost-effective manner. And as always, budgetary trade-offs are required. We simply cannot do all the things that we want to do. In summary, the Finance Committee recommends by unanimous vote a balanced budget of $31,837,16. This represents a 4% increase over last year. The budget maintains appropriate, recommended financial reserves and maintains the town's fiscal strength. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If we could have the lights up? Thank you. So, we'll get the... First, we'll get the overall recommendations on the budget from various town boards and committees, and then I'll review the process for how we debate the budget. Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen voted unanimously to support Article 11.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted unanimously to support Article 11.
Do we have any recommendations from any other town boards or committees? Okay. So, the discussion of the budget is essentially parallel to what I described for the consent agenda. What I will do, if you have your motions handout, this that was available at the front, I will be reading down the budget line items, the first table under Article 11 on page six. Those are the top-level line items for the budget. And at each one, if you either have a question or would like to debate that line item, just say "hold" in a loud voice, and we will have a discussion on that one. It's just to enable us to move through more quickly. So, General Government for a budget of $1,421,239?
Hold.
Okay, we have a hold on that. Protection of Persons and Property, $2,747,506. Board of Health for $108,030. Public Works for $1,195,757. Public Assistance, $234,250. Okay, hold on Public Assistance. No hold on Education, okay? Recreation, $189,023. Insurance and Benefits, $1,877,000. Unclassified, $152,000. County Retirement, $932,452. And Long-Term Debt, $1,645,816. So, we have holds on General Government and Public Assistance. So, the floor is now open for debate. I recognize Mr. Levitan at microphone five.
May I use the lectern?
If you're going to make your motion first.
Okay, sure. The Carlisle Housing Authority... I'm sorry, Mark Levitan, 105 Wolf Rock Road. The Carlisle Housing Authority moves to amend Article 11 as follows. One, by decreasing the line item for general expense in Town Hall by the sum of $7,500, intended for housing-related purposes, resulting in a total for this line item of $812,15. And two, by adding a new line item for FY 2019 entitled Housing Authority to the Budget Section entitled Public Assistance, and adding $41,500 to this new line item. These amendments would result in a total General Government budget of $1,413,759... Excuse me. In a total Public Assistance budget of $275,750, and a total operating budget of $29,844,389.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, motion has been made and seconded. If we could have the lights down, and we have the text of this amendment up here. Does that look correct to you, Mr. Levitan?
Yes. Yes.
And then, Carolyn, if we could have the next slide. So, if anyone wants to mark things on pages six and seven of your motions handout, these are the new numbers that you would see. The middle column is the original, and the proposed amendment is on the right. With the prior discussion with the Housing Authority, I said that they could have five minutes to explain their amendment. You may use the lectern, Mr. Levitan.
Mr. Moderator. For the first time ever, to our knowledge, a Board of Selectmen is proposing to eliminate all funding for professional staff serving an elected town committee. The budget amendment we're offering tonight would restore some funding for a housing coordinator, which the town has employed for the last 11 years, while reducing the positions hours by a third compared to two years ago, and saving taxpayers more than $10,000 from the current FY 18 budget. It is our intention that this person will support the Housing Trust, as well as the Carlisle Housing Authority, as has been the case. As we understand the position of the majority of the Board of Selectmen, they don't believe the town needs someone on staff with expertise in affordable housing for three reasons. One, there is no actual affordable housing project in the pipeline to work on. Two, there's no consensus between the Housing Authority and the Board of Selectmen, who control the Affordable Housing Trust, on how to move forward. And three, we haven't asked the citizens of Carlisle what kind of affordable housing they want and are willing to pay for. In our view, those are the very reasons we need a housing professional. This is to objectively gather the information that these committees and we taxpayers need to determine which affordable housing options are really feasible and will result in projects that are consistent with the town's character, and also to determine which development options are most likely to get state and federal financial assistance to minimize Carlisle taxpayer costs. Without this information, it will be impossible for the two committees and taxpayers to reach consensus, for people in town to know what they prefer and are willing to pay for. Affordable housing is a complex, highly-regulated field involving local, state, federal housing, nondiscrimination laws, plus many, many, many regulations. Neither the Board of Selectmen nor the Housing Authority have any professional expertise in this area. We, along with Carlisle taxpayers, need a dedicated person with real affordable housing expertise to help us objectively answer five critical questions. One, what types of projects, for example rental versus homeownership, or seniors versus workforce housing, or various combinations, are most likely to maximize the financial assistance we can get from state and federal sources? Establishing effective relationships with key officials at regional, state, and federal levels, and knowing what they're looking for and how to obtain maximum support, is essential to our success, and we need a professional person for that. Two, what types of projects will maximize the amount of CPA money we can use and thus minimize the need for additional taxes? We already have a pretty good amount of CPA money in the bank, more than $400,000 of which can only be used for housing, affordable housing. But even CPA-funded projects must comply with other state and federal housing requirements. Three, Governor Baker has established to propose a number of new affordable housing initiatives in the last two years to address the acute housing affordability crisis in the greater Boston area. How will those programs work, and what can Carlisle do to access some of the funds? Four, what type of design requirements do we need to impose on affordable housing projects that will make them consistent with the semi-royal character of Carlisle, minimize any threats to drinking water, and other elements that need to fit into our town's context? The town has no certified planners on staff, and we make this a requirement for this person. Five, to what extent can we legally give preference to people already living or working in Carlisle? It's a very tricky issue, requires compliance with state policies and the Federal Fair Housing Act, and we have never really fully addressed this issue. We need a professional to help us with guidance. In addition, we are looking at a master plan project. I served on the Master Plan Steering Committee. Housing is a huge component of a master plan. We could easily reduce our costs and have better data and better context for Carlisle by having this position in place before we embark on a master plan. In addition, in order to maintain the ability to get safe harbor from 40B, we need to have a verified and approved housing production plan by November of 2020. The timing suggests we should have a housing coordinator. It's very data-intensive. So, these are the reasons we need to have a professional staff person to help us with these housing challenges. Finally, the housing coordinator has...
Please do wrap up.
I'm right there. ...for these 11 years, provided critical assistance to dozens of Carlisle residents, maybe some of you in the room here, who are experiencing serious housing and financial issues and even foreclosure. The net additional amount to be appropriated of $34,000 represents 0.11% of the total FY 19 town budget, or about $13.65 on an annual real estate tax bill of $12,000. We ask you to vote tonight in favor of this amendment, so we can have the information and leadership needed to determine how to best move forward on new affordable housing initiatives in Carlisle. And I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levitan. Well, now, I understand that some boards and committees with the advance notice of this amendment have already voted to take positions on this. I'll turn first to the Housing Authority.
The Housing Authority voted 4 to 0 unanimously to support the amendment.
Thank you. Board of Selectmen?
The Selectmen voted unanimously to oppose the Housing Authority's proposed budget amendment.
FinCom?
The Finance Committee voted unanimously to oppose the amendment.
Did any other town boards or committees... Did the Housing Trust take a vote?
Well, just so you know, the Housing Trust is comprised of seven persons. One, Citizen-at-Large Bill Rizzo, raise your hand, Bill. One person from the Housing Authority, Steve Perelman. And the other five are Selectmen. So, we view this as a budget issue and not as a housing issue per se. So, we take it no position.
Okay, thank you. Did any other town boards or committees take a vote? Okay, so, the floor is now open to debate on this amendment. I will first recognize Mr. Brown from the Board of Selectmen. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I've been asked to read a statement on behalf of the Board of Selectmen. The Selectmen voted unanimously to oppose the Housing Authority's proposed budget amendment to fund the housing coordinator position. We'd like to first state that a vote in opposition of the budget amendment before you is not a vote against affordable housing, is a vote in support of the months-long, well-planned budget process, and for assessing affordable housing needs, building a plan, and for collaboration before considering spending town resources on a new staff member. This amendment is a departure from the longstanding agreement among all town departments, boards, and committees regarding the budget process established by the Finance Committee in collaboration with the Selectmen. After months of open meetings to get input and careful review of each request in relation to competing ones, many are reduced or denied in order to achieve a balanced budget. All other departments whose requests were not granted in full accept the outcomes of the process. It is the position of the Board of Selectmen that the planning phase, which in part will be a component of the master planning process led by the Planning Board, will require expertise that is beyond a week-in, week-out general's housing coordinator, who is largely administrative, coordinating rather than initiating or providing expert analysis. We will need to engage consultants whose focus expertise will help us to understand housing finance, development, legal issues, demographics, and housing demand. This is why we have proposed access to regional experts as needed in the operating budget. In addition, the Housing Trust has available CPA funds already appropriated by town meeting with which we can hire targeted outside consultants. For a small town with no housing under its direct management, a regional approach makes a lot of sense. We are not aware of any other town in the Commonwealth that funds a housing coordinator through its budget, nor any town with no housing units under its management that has a housing coordinator. Regional experts and consultants, when needed, are a much more effective way to fund research and planning. For the day-to-day housing support tasks required, the budget we have proposed provides coverage for all the current needs as determined by months of review of materials provided by the Housing Authority and as reviewed by Town Council regarding towns' legal obligations. Administrative support will be provided by the Town Administrator and his assistant. The minimal legal obligations will be handled by Town Council within the retainer, and public inquiries regarding housing will be handled by the Council on Aging, staff who already deal with similar citizen inquiries. We strongly encourage you to vote no on the proposed budget amendment.
Thank you. Did FinCom have a... Want to make some comments as well?
FinCom unanimously approved the following statement. The Finance Committee voted unanimously to oppose the Carlisle Housing Authority's operating budget amendment to fund the housing coordinator position. We believe this amendment runs contrary to the annual town budget process and undermines the collective planning by the Finance Committee, the Board of Selectmen, and the town departments and committees who both participated in the process and respect the final budget recommendations. It also establishes a potentially costly precedent because passage of the amendment would encourage future use of this tactic to obtain funding that would otherwise not be recommended as part of the annual budgeting process. More importantly, the level of fact-based analysis provided by this process, which includes many hours of meetings with people intimately familiar with the details, simply is not feasible at town meeting. A high standard for approval must be applied to this amendment, which seeks to overturn a budget decision reached after a thorough vetting process that included all appropriate committees, town departments, and town officials. This high approval standard cannot be reached without scrutiny of all the material information that has been considered in reaching the original recommendation. For any voter to support this amendment based on a brief debate at town meeting or only limited information would be a disservice to the town. The Finance Committee remains committed to balancing the needs of the town and the demands placed on taxpayers to fund the town. Achieving a sustainable budget requires difficult trade-offs, and we ask that you support the recommendation as presented in the warrant. recommendation as presented in the warrant, and FinCom recommends you vote no on the budget amendment.
Okay, thank you. So we'll now have floor debate. I recognize Mr. Pearlman, you have three minutes.
I'm Steve Pearlman. I'm the Vice Chair of the Housing Authority. I'm at 377 Baldwin Road. I've been on the Housing Authority for 20 years. I've never had any issues or debates with any Board of Selectmen until about after until 2015. We've had tremendous cooperation between the committees. I'm also a retired attorney. I've negotiated my entire life, and I know when another party is interested in negotiating and in problem-solving. We've worked for four years. We've made at least a half a dozen proposals, some formal, some informal. Not once has the Board of Selectmen, in their role as the Affordable Housing Trust, ever suggested, "Well, why don't you expand that a little bit? Why don't you narrow it? Maybe we'd support it if you narrowed it to be less inclusive." Never. Everything has been no. There's never been we -- two years ago, we had a housing coordinator who worked 28 hours a week. This began a year ago, over a year ago, when the Board of Selectmen proposed, then-chair proposed, to eliminate the Housing Authority's staff and replace it with something called the Regional Housing Consortium of Concord. We then agreed to cut the hours by four hours from 28 to 24, and they agreed to go along with that for a year. In the middle of the year, our housing coordinator resigned. More than half the money was left in the budget. We asked to be able to hire a consultant to work with us on it. We got 10 hours for the entire month of January, and then when we asked, when we asked in February for additional money for the rest of the fiscal year, I'm trying to find this here, we got a letter from the Housing Authority stating, where can I find this? Stating that, here it is. Here it is. Stating, "We are not able to assist the Carlisle Housing Authority with performing statutory obligations or other duties of board members. No funding." So this claim that they've put money, or will put money, into consultants, the Regional Housing Consortium, their budget's closed for this fiscal year.
Your three minutes, please wrap up.
Okay, I'm going to wrap up. That money is not going to be spent. They have not agreed to work with us because they're not convinced that the town of Carlisle really believes in affordable housing.
Okay, thank you.
That's what's at issue here. Thank you.
At microphone four, could you please identify yourself?
Hi, I'm Morgan Verst. I'm at 76 Wolf Rock Road. I'm going to be reading a sample of comments received from Housing Authority supporters, starting with my comment. Having someone who knows how to navigate
Excuse me, I'm sorry, but at town meeting, you speak for yourself.
Okay.
You're welcome to make your own statement, but I will not have you read comments from other people. Thank you.
No problem. All right, well, then, this is my comment. Having someone who knows how to navigate through the field of affordable housing gives Carlisle an advantage when finding solutions for seniors to stay in town, giving people who work here the opportunity to live here, and ultimately creating a wonderfully diverse community for our kids to continue and thrive in. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Verge.
Thank you. Angie Verge, 29 Indian Hill. As the Chair of the Conservation Commission, I wanted to make a statement on behalf of the Commission in regards to this amendment to Article 11, and the statement was approved by the Commission. Our comments do not at all reflect the issue of funding the position of the housing coordinator, but rather regarding the budget process that all boards and committees in town have been asked to respectfully participate in. Our Commission also had personnel budget requests for the fiscal year 19 budget that were not honored. We were very disappointed and frankly frustrated at the new procedure that the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen had implemented for this budget cycle. We did not receive funding for the additional hours that we requested for our administrative assistant. We are unhappy with the results, and the need for these additional hours is valid and urgent. But we followed the procedure, and we are committed to working positively with the town boards and committees to improve the process for fiscal year 20. We're concerned about the precedent that this amendment may set if town boards and committees start going around the budget process when they're unhappy with the results. Our town officials are a team of very talented and committed volunteers that we have trusted to work together to better the process, streamline the procedures, and provide better communication to all who participate in the budget process. And we respect the integrity of the process and do not believe that our boards and committees should use article amendments at town meeting as a vehicle for funding budget requests that were denied during the annual process. Thank you.
Thank you. No applause, please.
May I respond to one?
No, you may not. I recognize Mr. Friedman at microphone one.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. David Friedman, 301 Hutchins Road. I agree with the Selectmen that we should not be here tonight to cast a vote either in favor of or opposed to affordable housing. I'm sorry that the Housing Authority hasn't intentionally framed the issue that way with their emotional appeal to citizens that, quote, "Affordable housing is under attack in Carlisle, and that you must come tonight and vote for diversity." The question on the floor is whether or not it makes sense to fund a housing coordinator for 18 and 3/4 hours per week, week in, week out, for 52 weeks, almost 1,000 hours, at a cost of $41,500. The Housing Authority has set forth five so-called critical questions that they claim a housing coordinator is needed to answer. First of all, we've had a housing coordinator for 11 years, and we are told we still don't have answers to any of these questions, some of which seem pretty basic and straightforward. That's not a very good rationale for hiring another one. A quick review of whether a housing coordinator is needed to answer their questions. I'm no expert, but I can answer their first question, one they state requires someone of, quote, "appropriate skills." I can tell you that rental developments for workers are more likely to get funding than ownership units for seniors. Both DHCD and MAPC provide free technical resources for additional insights. Their question about CPA is also basic. The percentage of CPA funding for a project has to be matched by the percentage of units that are affordable. That's CPA 101. And if we need more detail, we already belong to the Community Preservation Coalition, which is the bible of CPA. Funding a housing coordinator to answer such simple questions makes no sense. To be fair, the one question that our previous coordinator couldn't have answered relates to new state housing initiatives. But there is a learning curve on new legislation, so the best source of information for this would be a regional consortium of technical experts who will see this play out across a range of application in many towns and can provide feedback as the information develops, not a part-time employee with limited ability to be involved in what is going on across eastern Massachusetts. Funding a housing coordinator for this makes no sense. Question four is about developing design requirements to ensure the protection of drinking water. Would a housing coordinator really better advise us on this question than the Board of Health, the Planning Board, and the Zoning Board of Appeals, all with direct Carlisle experience dealing with the issues of dense housing with no public water or sewer? We had a staff housing coordinator for 11 years, but we still engaged engineering and hydrogeology experts to help address such questions. Funding a housing coordinator to not be able to help with this makes no sense. Their last question is local preference. The statute is pretty clear. More importantly, it is the applicant's, in other words, the developer's responsibility to make the case to DHCD that there is a local need for affordable housing that won't impinge on other underserved populations. Funding a housing coordinator to do something the developer will do also makes no sense.
Please wrap up.
Last paragraph. There's a lot to process, I understand, and it's one of the many reasons why I feel so strongly that this is not something that should be dated at town meeting. Again, the question is not whether we want a more diverse community, it's whether the Housing Authority has made the case for funding a housing coordinator for almost 1,000 hours at a cost of $41,500. For me, the answer is very clear. I oppose the amendment.
Thank you. Mr. Cruz at microphone four.
Brian Cruz, 71 Rogers Road. My concerns with this amendment are not substantive, so much as process-based. This is not the seeking to revise upward or downward a particular line item. It's the proposal to create an entirely new line item on the floor of town meeting beyond considerations whether that's effectively beyond the scope of the warrant article itself. It effectively creates a precedent whereby the entire FinCom budget process is obviated. It's not just about whether or not a particular committee or commission or board could come and seek to amend and add a line item that they were denied during the budget process. Conceivably, anyone could propose a new line item for anything, as long as it doesn't really blow up the budget. You think of a scenario whereby a minority of a particular board actually proposes to change the budget, even if it's not supported by that board itself. So in that respect, this is not the place to be deciding whether or not to add a line item to the budget. If someone had a concern about how high a budget item was, that's one thing, but this is creating a process in a form where it was never intended. In fact, this budget item doesn't even actually, notwithstanding the entire presentation was about a housing coordinator, this budget item doesn't even talk about a housing coordinator. It just talks about adding funding for the Housing Authority. And in fact, my understanding is that that amount of money being requested is in fact more than they're even proposing they need for the housing coordinator. So again, that's some math that is really not being discussed in detail and should have been done early in the process. Finally, it's my understanding that, and I may be wrong in this, but it's my understanding that never before did the Housing Authority solely and entirely upon its own accord hire the housing coordinator. And it's my understanding, and it may be something that Town Council should look into, that per DHCD guidelines, it's not possible for a housing authority to just solely hire a housing coordinator on its own, that it has to hire an executive director as the first process of having staff of its own accord. So that's something that may need to get looked into. But regardless, that's a substantive issue more than a process one, and again, as I said, this just seems wildly out of focus for how the budget process should work.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson at microphone two.
Ralph Anderson, 433 Baldwin Road. I'd like to quote a little bit from the Town of Carlisle Housing Production Plan, which was approved by the town. Under the area section of Carlisle Housing Authority, "It was established in 1986 in agreement between the town and the state to address the issue of low and moderate-income housing in Carlisle. Housing Authority are agents of the state government that typically own and manage rental housing for low and moderate-income households." In another section, under the Town of Carlisle Affordable Housing Trust. The Town of Carlisle Affordable Housing Trust was established by the Declaration of Trust made on October 24, 2006, by the Town of Carlisle, acting by and through the Board of Selectmen, and approved by a vote in the annual town meeting. The purpose of the trust is to provide the preservation and creation of affordable housing for the Town of Carlisle. That ends my quote. I've been a long-term advocate of affordable housing and have been on the Board of Directors in support of organizations in support of this goal for over 20 years. However, I do not support this amendment. The Housing Trust is charged with the creation of affordable housing. The Housing Authority is charged with the ownership and management of affordable housing. The Housing Trust is therefore in the best position to determine the need for and the timing of the planning tools for creation of affordable housing. Therefore, it should be on their call when that person is needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lahatsky.
Alan Lahatsky, 634 West Street, Carlisle. As was mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, I've been a member of the Housing Authority for 19 years. 15 of them I spend as Chair. Housing policy and housing operations is a very complicated area. It needs professional staff. Pretty much every town with a successful housing program has professional staff. They do not depend on regional consortia unless they are so small that they have no choice. We have had this position for 12 years, and it's being eliminated. We're not asking for something new. We're just asking to retain the professional staff that the Housing Authority has had. I will point out that in the 32 years the Housing Authority has existed, it accomplished nothing until after the purchase of Benfield and the hiring of a housing administrator. We were able to develop appropriate plans, an RFP, which turns out to have been a model for other towns. A number of other towns have asked for RFP so that they can develop similar projects to Benfield. The two projects that we've done since hiring a housing coordinator have been worldwide recognized. We've run international awards for the quality of this. The state has held this up as examples of what a good project should be. We have done this at very minimal cost to the town. The town has bought land. The town still owns that land. We have engaged private developers to build and manage these projects at no ongoing cost to the town. I think that the notion that we can continue to do these sort of projects with any sort of regional coordination is not very credible. Also, given the fact that this, as Steve mentioned, the $7,500 that was inserted into the budget, they never bothered talking to the regional consortium about actually spending that money, so it's not going to be spent. It's just sitting there as a line item. You'll also notice that early on in the meeting tonight, we transferred $20,000 of unexpended housing funds to the general budget. So, you know, we're not asking for a lot of money here. We've been very prudent in our expenditures to date, and I think that we will continue that, but it takes a long time to develop any sort of expertise.
Please, please wrap up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any further debate? Yes, microphone one, please. Identify yourself.
Liz Bishop, 291 Kimball Road. I have a question. The article in the warrant, the warrant was closed about 30-plus days ago, correct?
Yes.
And the article that we are here to debate is actually Article 11 as presented, so it's a parliamentary procedure question here.
Sure.
At this point, are we actually going to move the budget for Article 11? Or in fact, are we permitting a call on the amendment because there's a difference? What are we about to vote upon?
Okay, sure. Fair, fair question.
Thank you.
So first of all, I always appreciate questions that enable us to illuminate some of the arcane aspects of town meeting. So as you pointed out, the town warrant, what came to you in the mail in the Blue Book, that represents the numbers as best the Finance Committee knows it at the time that, and the Selectmen at the time the warrant is closed, about a month ago. The actual motion that has been made, the warrant gives you the warning of what's the topic, the motion which comes in your motion booklet gives the precise motion that we're voting on. And if you were careful to look at, compare every single number, you might have seen that a few changed here and there. But we're actually voting on this when we get to the vote and not on this. Now, what we will get to as soon as we close debate on the amendment is not the entire budget, but simply this amendment. The amendment goes first. Okay? That answer your question? Ms. Arnold at microphone four.
Hi, I'm Barney Arnold. I live at 225 Lowell Road. I just had a couple of quick comments, I guess. One is, I'm not sure I agree with the argument about this is, this amendment is not following the appropriate process. I mean, it seems to me that, and again, I don't know all the ins and outs of what's going on between the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee and the housing folks, but it seems to me that if you but it seems to me that if you feel that you have not been adequately heard or have not had a chance to make your case, or that in fact, given our former government here in Carlisle, the town meeting is an appropriate place to, you know, as a last resort. So I, and I've never been a big fan of process as a reason not to do something, but I'll just, so that's my comment on process. The other comment is that I'm not quite sure I understand why the Board of Selectmen are now saying that there's no need for this position when we've been funding it for the last 10 years or so. So there's no explanation about why things have changed such that we feel we don't need it. Now, if you're making an argument that we can't afford it, that's different, but that's not what I'm hearing. And the last thing I want to say is that overall, though, I'm just disappointed that our elected leaders and the housing folks can't work this out and bring to town meeting something that everybody's in agreement about, that will in fact move our town forward in terms of having more affordable housing. And that's really the biggest point I want to make, is that I think as our leadership, you should do better. And we shouldn't have this happen because, in fact, you should be working it out as you go through the process of developing the budget, unless you're not committed to affordable housing, in which case you should say that flat out. So that's my comment.
Okay. Please, this is a civil debating society, please. I can't quite see who it is, but at microphone three.
Hi. John Williams from 104 Hart Farm Road, and I'd like to speak for this amendment. I was on the Board of Selectmen for nine years, from 2005 through 2014, and I was the point person, one of them, for all of those years for affordable housing. And I believe that we were able during that period, that nine years, to bring to fruition two projects, Benfield and the Goth Property Project that have been mentioned. And I believe we were able to do it precisely because we were not ideological about it. It was purely pragmatic. Our board was no fan of 40B. I think most of us, I know I did, voted to repeal it, but we did what we felt was in the best interest of the town. In 2006, this position was created. It was Article 8. It was passed unanimously by the town meeting, and it was funded from the general funds. There has been no process to eliminate it. Last year, the Finance Committee was actually surprised when the Board of Selectmen told them to take the funding out. So there was no process. This board has been openly hostile to affordable housing. And it is true, as was just stated, it is incumbent upon the board to come to some decisions. And it's very, very, I think, telling that this board doesn't seem to care about putting upon a butters a surprise 40B in their backyard. That was one of the other things that we did in 2006. We were in the middle of fighting Coventry Woods, which was very upsetting to a lot of people. When you have, when you're on the Board of Selectmen and you have people calling you in tears because they fear that their home is going to be rendered unfit to live in, that catches your full and undivided attention. And it also, by the way, costs hundreds of thousands of dollars and countless hours from the ZBA, Planning Board, the Board of Selectmen, et cetera, and most of all, it's unfair and immoral to the butters, our fellow citizens. The Board of Selectmen has to really put your big-boy pants on and let's get together. You hear from lots of people. I understand that. But at the end of the day, you're the executive body, and there are hard decisions that have to be made about affordable housing. They're not popular, but you have to make them. It's just, it's part of the job.
Please do wrap up.
Please do your job. Thank you.
Okay. At microphone one, please.
Julia Crop, 110 Ice Mountain Road. Mr. Moderator, I submit that it is a bad idea to reward bad behavior. Not obeying the budgeting process is bad behavior. In this warrant, there are more than 20 organizations, commissions, committees in this town. If going around the budgeting process is rewarded this year, the next town meeting you will see many more committees trying to get the funds they desire. All of them believe in what they're doing. Please, we've now been thinking this many minutes. I don't think you're going to get as generous a turnout from the citizens if they know that they're going to step through hours of people with special pleading for their own causes. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I make a comment? Mr. Esculio.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just a couple of things. You know, I don't appreciate the mudslinging, and I think we are doing our job. As Mr. Triola stated, $350,000 plus worth of requests were denied. We denied the housing coordinator request. We denied a library request. We denied a Board of Health request. We denied a conscom request. We denied a clerk request. We denied police requests and fire department requests. Does that mean we hate all of these and we are opposed to all of these? No. We are doing our job. Taxes continue to go up. We're negotiating a new school contract, which is going to cost us a significant amount of money over the next few years. We're negotiating other contracts with town officials. It's more than just housing. There's this entire budget that we look at. We start the process in September, and we continue it all the way through basically now. And it is not easy. We have to make tough decisions. I was on conscom for seven years, and it's hard to tell people who I know need the support, "Sorry, not going to happen this year." But you have to do it sometimes. You know, and that's not to say if, you know, in a year or two, if there's need for housing and we realize we made a mistake, we'll put it back in the budget. You know, I mean, but now is not the time. You know, we can cover the resources or the needs with the resources we have. We feel the consortium can step in where we don't have those resources. The Affordable Housing Trust has 40, you'll see it later, 49,000 or something, in CPA funds that we can use for consultants. There are other ways to do it this year. If it doesn't work, we fix it next year, but there's a way to get through it. You know, if we, you know, if, it's, sorry, I'm just frustrated. We're doing our job. Thank you, John.
Thank you. No applause, please. It's not the way we run here. Okay. Mr. Levitan, I'll give you one minute.
I don't think I need a minute. Mark Levitan, 105 Wolf Rock Road. I just want to remind the meeting that this is not a request for additional funding. We're facing elimination of the only staff person. And by the way, it reports to the town administrator who reports to the Board of Selectmen. So it is a matter of watching your own backyard in terms of your responsibilities to the town. I understand the frustration of many other boards, but this is a complete elimination of our support, and it will mean that we will not be moving forward with any initiatives relative to affordable housing. And it isn't because I expect the trust to provide any initiatives. We've seen that they don't.
Okay. Thank you. I think we're at the end of debate. Oh, I'm sorry. I always have trouble seeing back there.
You can't see back here, no.
But you're dressed brightly enough. I just didn't look hard enough.
Just for you.
Please, identify yourself. Thank you.
Kelly Guarino, 119 Maple Street. I wanted to thank the Board of Selectmen and the FinCom for doing their job. I think as they've explained the process and, I know, the budget overview process may not be the most exciting presentation, but I think it's an important part, obviously, of what we vote on, and they very clearly explained how they go through the process. So staying with the process, I was sitting trying to think what I could add to the conversation, and there is another part of the process that this amendment would bypass. That has to do with the Personnel Board and having a job description that's been vetted and is clearly understood what requirements are part of the job and what activities are with that. And the reason I bring that up, for a number of years, I was on the Community Preservation Committee and as, during some of the time that the housing coordinator was funded by CPA funds. And I remember, I was chair of the committee then, when the proposal first came to our committee for the housing coordinator funding, it was for a certain number of hours. Within that same cycle, individuals came back to us with an increased number of hours, and there wasn't, we had a lot of discussion about whether there was good justification for that. And my vote, I don't remember if I voted no then or if I let it go through. If I did let it, if I did vote yes, it was definitely with reservation. And what our discussion was on the CPC then was that there weren't clear metrics, there were no clear accountability in what those increased hours would do. And I think I'm seeing the same thing here, that without bypassing the process, there still wouldn't be the same oversight and equality with the other boards that we would like to see. In terms of just supporting housing in general, I think also that affordable housing requires a consensus process, and if, and the best way to reach a consensus process is to stay within the system and to work with all the different elements that are in that system. And I think there'll be more support for affordable housing if the support comes through a normal process instead of trying to bypass it through an amendment. So again, thanks for, to the Selectmen and the FinCom for following the process they did, and I would encourage everyone to not support this amendment.
Mr. Lahatsky, is this something completely new?
Yes.
Okay, you have 30 seconds.
Alan Lahatsky, 634 West Street. The Personnel Board significantly reviewed like over four meetings, the housing coordinator position in 2016, 2017, and approved it. This was brought by town administrator. It was approved by the Housing Authority and by the Personnel Board.
And I submit, this isn't a, it's not a comment.
No, no. Sit down. Sit down. Mr. Friedman, is this something completely new?
It is.
Okay. You have 15 seconds.
For those who are disappointed in process, I'd just like to say that I served on, for four months, on a working group to address this issue. The Housing Authorities, the Housing Authorities specifically said they would take part in this process, a working group to look at whether there were other more costly proposals to deal with this, and they showed up at the very first meeting and said that they'd already taken a vote to take this to town meeting if we didn't agree with their demands.
Okay. Thank you. There is no parliamentary procedural on point of clarification. Mr. Pearlman, did you have a motion to make or?
I had a question for town council. I wanted him to clarify whether this, whether there's anything procedurally out of order.
That you don't have the right to ask general, generic questions of town council. If you have a specific question about the process, you can pose it to me, and if I can't answer it, I may ask town council for his advice. Please, please approach the microphone. Do you have a specific question about process?
My specific question is, was not this amendment run by you and town council and approved, not that they, not that you or town council is in favor of the amendment, but procedurally, there was, I was told that this was perfectly legitimate and was helped with the wording, in fact, on how I ought to word it.
Okay. Fair question. Let me, let me answer that. This is an opportunity to explain a process around town meeting. Any citizen, any board who wishes to propose an article, for example, by petition, by citizen petition, or if it's a board or committee that is going through the normal process, or someone who has an amendment, by policy, I make myself available to at least clarify that an article or proposed amendment is correct as to form. Town council on this particular amendment, both town council and I looked at it, and the town administrator as well, to try to help the Housing Authority get it into correct form, for the purpose, we do not want to come to the floor of town meeting and have people arguing over arcane process. We'd like to have a discussion about the policy, which is on the merits, which is what we've had, you know, good discussion tonight. So the amendment is correct as to form. Questions about whether it is legal, illegal, whether Personnel Board was done appropriately or not, neither town council nor I, nor the town administrator got in the middle of that. So fair question. Thank you for that. Okay. With that, I think we are ready for a vote. Is that correct?
One more.
I'm sorry?
This is new.
This is new? Well, I'll give you 15 seconds then.
I want to thank the Board of Selectmen for doing their job, except in the area of affordable housing. Thank you.
Write a check.
That was not new, Mr. Williams.
Thank you.
That was John Williams. When debates are going on for a long time, when I'm trying to close things down, I try to be flexible to allow new points to come up, but we don't need to have excess back and forth. Okay. I believe we're ready for a vote. I'll ask for a voice vote first, but I expect that we'll move to the cards fairly quickly. So this is, and actually, if we could just have the lights down in front here, just so everyone has one, one last chance to look at this. We are voting on an amendment, and that would be to, as we see, we're moving 7,500 from the general expense in town hall line, moving it to the new line item, Housing Authority, under the public assistance category, and also adding, we're adding 41,500. That's a net change of 34,500 to the budget compared to what FinCom had recommended. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
And in the cafeteria, actually, let me, I think I know the answer to this one, but I'd like to, just to be safe, could we have the cards? All those in favor, please hold up your card. Okay, and my assistant moderator, you have a good luck in your room. Okay? On those opposed? Okay. Thank you. In the cafeteria, Vanessa, what do you have there?
We have three nays.
Three nays. And I think we fairly clearly had nays prevailing here in the main auditorium, so the amendment fails, and I so declare. So now we move on to the full budget. Mr. Levitan, I believe that you had asked for the hold on the public assistance, was that, or someone else? Was that, but that was just in connection with this. Okay, I just wanted to be sure. Thank you. I appreciate your cooperation on that. There were no other holds, so we are now ready to vote on the full budget as proposed by FinCom. Were there any further, I'm sorry, was there any other debate, anything else anyone wants to raise? Okay, we're ready to go to a vote. This is a majority vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and I so declare. Yes. Oh, it's a two-thirds. Okay. The town council has advised me that I misstated, I believe I said majority. There's a transfer included here, which turns it into a two-thirds vote. My sense of the voice vote was that it had well more than two-thirds. My sense of the voice vote was that it had well more than two-thirds. Does anyone want to question that? I can, we can go to a show of cards if we need to. Okay, so, the motion carries by more than two-thirds, and I so declare. Thank you. We are now on to Article 12, capital equipment expenditures. I recognize Ms. Reed.
Thank you, Ms., thank you, Mr. Moderator. Get this closer. I move that 684,755 dollars be raised and appropriated for fiscal year 2019, and to make this appropriation, that 125,000 dollars be transferred from free cash, that 300,000 dollars be transferred from the ambulance fund, and that the balance of the 259,755 dollars be raised from the fiscal year 2019 tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the Board of Selectmen, except for the items for the Carlisle Public Schools, which sums are to be spent by the Carlisle School Committee for the designated capital purposes. And further, that after June 30th, 2021, any residual unexpended portion of any listed appropriation shall be returned to the general fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Ms. Reed?
Kate Reed, Vice Chair, Long Term Capital Needs Committee. This article provides for capital equipment and projects for the towns' departments that are part of the town's capital plan. I won't go through this line by line, but instead, I'll point out a couple of the larger items. First, we generally replace one of the police cruisers each year. Last year, the Police Department requested two cruisers, so that the budget would not be subject to a big bump. Town Meeting approved paying for one and a half cruisers, with the understanding that we'd purchase, in quotation marks, the other half this year, plus the usual whole cruiser. Thus, the 79,300 dollars you see for the police cruiser is really for one and a half cruisers. Then I think it's worth pointing out that we also replace ambulances periodically. What is important to know here is that the funds to pay for the 300,000 dollar ambulance purchase are transferred from the ambulance fund. The ambulance fund is where fees collected from people who use ambulance services are collected, and they entirely cover the expense. You'll be happy to know that if you're lucky enough to get a ride in our new ambulance, it'll be a much more comfortable one, and you'll get the best care available as quickly as possible because of the state-of-the-art tools that this vehicle will be carrying.
Thank you. Recommendation from the Board of Selectmen?
The Selectmen voted unanimously to support Article 12.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted unanimously to support Article 12.
Long Term Caps Committee?
Long Term Caps Committee voted unanimously to support Article 12.
Recommendations from any other town boards or committees? See none, any debate? Okay, let's move right to a vote. This is for the total of 684,755 dollars for the capital equipment projects as listed in the motions handout. Majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries, and I so declare. Article 13 is a series of appropriations on behalf of the Municipal Facilities Committee. I recognize Mr. Jerry Lerman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move Article 13 exactly as written in the motions handout.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Lerman?
Hi, my name is Jerry Lerman. I'm Vice Chairman of the Municipal Facilities Committee, which authored this warrant article, and I'd like to speak in its support. Before getting into the dollars and cents, I'd like to give a little background for the article. The town of Carlisle currently owns eight buildings, which are listed behind me. Except for the school, which has a dedicated maintenance staff, the responsibility for maintaining these buildings falls to the departments that control them. When we hire our library director, we choose someone with skills as a librarian, not for knowledge of heating systems and leaky roofs. When we hire our police chief, we pick someone with public safety skills, not maintenance skills or skill with selecting an emergency power generator. When we hire our town administrator, we choose somebody with administrative skills, not skills dealing with HVAC systems. As a result, over the years, not enough attention has been focused on maintaining the town's structures, and we often find ourselves dealing with emergencies when something breaks, or with problems that linger longer than they should, or buildings that aren't maintained as well as they should be. In 2015, Town Meeting allocated money for a study of four of the town's buildings: Town Hall, the Police Station, the Fire Station, and DPW. The study conducted by TBA Architects was completed in 2017. In addition to examining the structures, they talked with the users of the buildings and compiled a detailed list of projects to bring the buildings into good repair and maximize their usefulness. Their cost estimates for these four buildings was an eye-popping $6 million. These costs include many renovations or expansions to the building, as well as repairs. While the TBA study was in progress, the Board of Selectmen created the Municipal Facilities Committee, which is way too many syllables for me to say often, so I'll call it the MFC. And their charter, which I'll quote, is "to investigate and advise the town regarding the design, construction, reconstruction, maintenance, alteration, or enlargement of all buildings and facilities owned by the town." So, the MFC looked at TBA's report and sorted their tasks into three categories: deferred maintenance, capital improvements, and renovations or expansions to make the buildings better suited to the way they're currently used. We eliminated some of the renovation or expansion tasks based on our understanding of town operations. We scaled back some others, and then prioritized the remaining tasks. We managed to whittle the cost down to about $2 million, spread out over five years. What we'll look at next are the costs for the first year of this five-year program. Those projects we judge to be the highest priority. What I'm presenting here is a summary of costs for the coming year. A more detailed list of the actual items is in the warrant book. To make things easier, I'll use rounded-off numbers. So, for Town Hall in FY19, we have $30,000 in costs for various building maintenance projects and for installation of roof heating cables to prevent ice dams. For the Police Station, there's a total of 153,000 dollars, which includes $20,000 for building repairs, $2,500 to upgrade the, the fire alarm system, $10,000 to determine what to do with the underground fuel, fuel storage tanks, and $120,000 to purchase a modular building, a trailer, to provide added space for personnel and to create an ADA accessible space at the Fire Station. For the Police Station, there is a total of 111,000 dollars, about 18,000 to address various repairs to the building, $8,500 for upgrades to the air conditioning system to make it more reliable and able to handle the added heat load of our new E911 electronics, $2,500 to make parking and entry to the Police Station work for people with disabilities, and two design projects. The first is to redesign the area where detainees are brought into the Police Station for booking to make it safer for our officers. The second project is to redesign the public entry area so visitors can use restrooms and other public rooms without having to enter the secured costs, the secured areas of the Police Station. These are our design costs, and the actual construction costs would come next year. For the DPW, there's a total of about 43,000 dollars. $3,000 for window and caulking, about $30,000 to handle various ventilation issues, and $10,000 to purchase new storage containers. So, the total cost for FY19 for each of the four buildings, adding in 15% for contingency, comes to the 387,111 dollars that you see in the warrant article. We believe that 15% contingency is a reasonable amount for these projects. This slide shows the various tasks broken out by category. $114,000 is for deferred maintenance, $130,000 is for capital expenses, and $92,000 is for renovations. Except for the large amount of money for capital spending for the Fire Station trailer, $120,000, most of the money is being spent on deferred maintenance. So, this warrant article funds the first year of a five-year program to put four of our town buildings in good repair. If we look at the next four years, you'll see the other planned expenditures that will appearing on warrants at future town meetings. As I mentioned before, the total cost for this program is about $2 million. If you look at the wording of the, the warrant motion, it had, it includes some unusual wording that says, "Projects may include, but shall not be limited to the following," and then it lists a series of items. This wording is meant to give flexibility to the town in how funds in this warrant article will be spent. It's possible that some projects will cost less than the amount projected. It's possible that there'll be money left in the contingency. Those funds could then be used for projects that aren't listed in the warrant article, maybe one that's scheduled for next year. It's also possible that an emergency might arise during the year that would make it desirable to postpone spending on one of the listed projects in order to do something more critical. Minor changes to the work listed in this article would have to be approved by the MFC. For any significant changes, such as adding a new project, the MFC would seek the approval of the Selectmen. So, in conclusion, the 387,000 dollars requested in this warrant article is a first step in what we hope is an ongoing process to wisely manage the town's facilities. It will protect the town's rather substantial investment in its facilities. If we manage our buildings in a more proactive way rather than waiting for a crisis, it will, in the long term, reduce costs to the town. If we perform regularly-scheduled maintenance on our buildings, they'll last longer and be more useful to the citizens of Carlisle and to our employees that use them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lerman. Okay, and the recommendation from the Municipal Finance Committee on this was unanimous, is that correct? Mr. Lerman? The recommendation of the committee on this article was unanimous? Yes, thank you. Board of Selectmen?
The Selectmen voted unanimously to support Article-
Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted unanimously to support Article 13.
Okay, and do we have recommendations from any other town boards or committees? Okay. Any debate on Article 13? Yes, please approach microphone.
Thank you. I'm Peg Schaefer, 67 Heald Road. The thing that bothers me about this is that I know the DPW needs a lot more than what they're getting. And from what I've heard, the proposed changes to the beautiful Town Hall, our beautiful fire, you know, police, all that sort of stuff, is really cosmetic. And I really sort of don't care for the changes to the proposed Fire Sta, to, not Fire Sta, the Police Station. You know, especially about going in for restrooms and all of that. If we can't afford a housing coordinator, the concept of being able to go pee at the, you know, costing me $50,000 so I can go pee at the Police Station is just wrong. Okay? Right? Sorry, folks. But, so, I really would like to have more discussion on what it is that we are, you know, it's like this big, huge thing, and I would like to see it cut up a little bit so that we could vote on specific changes. And I feel that if I vote for this, I've lost all control and all viewpoints on any of these changes, and you guys can go do whatever you want. So, that's my viewpoint.
Thank you for your comments. Any other debate?
Wade Tonis, 253 Noel Farm Road. Does the town own the Greeno Barn land, and what is the intention to do with that?
So, um, I, I, okay, let, let me give you a partial answer. I, I believe, Mr. Lerman, the Municipal Finance Committee was not charged with looking at the Greeno Barn, is that correct? Okay, so the Greeno Barn is, I'm looking to misverge, is under the control of the Conservation Commission, correct?
No, it's, it's actually ours.
Oh, it's out of the Board of Selectmen? Oh, okay, you've got that potato.
Yeah, yeah, we got the potato.
Okay, so, um-
Does anybody want a barn?
So, if, if you could just give the very briefest-
Sure. There was a committee set up. The recommendation was to take the barn down. The Board of Selectmen has tried to give it away. Nobody wants it. So, ultimately, the process is probably going to be, it'll have to go out for bid in order to get the barn taken down. So, we haven't gotten to that process yet, but that's where things stand.
Okay, fair enough. I, I see, Mr. Lerman, let me see if there's any more comment, question, or debate from the floor. At microphone three-
Hi, Deborah Durago, 33 Heald Road. I'd like more explanation of this trailer for the Fire Department. Again, three times the cost of a housing coordinator. I don't understand why we need this. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Lerman, why don't you try to address both of these questions that were raised?
The Municipal Facilities Committee went through a long process talking with the department heads of the four buildings that we looked at. Well, dealing with the Police Station, the fact that there isn't a publicly accessible restroom may sound trivial, but it's really an important issue. It means that if somebody comes into the Police Station, a public person, and wants to use a bathroom, they have to be accompanied by a police officer. That's, that's not a really good way to use the time of our officers. For the DPW, what I presented here is the first year of a five-year plan. There are, these are the, the items that we, we deem to be the most important in conjunction with the heads of the various departments. There are other tasks that are scheduled for the DPW that will come in the next four years. As to the trailer at the Police Station, the recommendation in the TBA analysis was to do a substantial renovation of the Fire Department at the cost of several million dollars to add more space for people and make it ADA accessible. Since the, the future of the Police Department is, is somewhat up in the air, sorry, I'll get closer. Since the, the future of the Police Department, of the Fire Department is somewhat up in the air at the moment, spending $2 million on a renovation to the building didn't seem to make much sense when purchasing a modular building like a trailer could solve most of the immediate problems for considerable- of the immediate problems for a considerable amount less money.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cruz?
Brian Cruz, 71 Rogers Road. I have a question, and it goes to the fact that it's been raised a number of times. This is year one of a five-year plan, and so it seems like in fiscal year two of this plan, it would significantly increase to over $1 million. And I'm just wondering, is the intent to do that through a general appropriation, or is there thought to debt borrowing? Has there been any discussion about that whatsoever?
Okay, so, we're only voting on year one. We're not—the this is not actually a proposal. I believe that the subsequent years are only provided for informational purposes. So I'll give you 10 seconds to respond briefly, but then we won't debate it. It's simply a point of information.
The million dollars in year two of this program is for the construction at the police Exactly how that's financed will be determined in the warrant article when it's presented to the town.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion or debate on this article? Okay, I believe we are ready for a vote. So, we are voting on—just to be clear, while Mr. Lerman did present what he thinks the future years might look like, at the moment, we are just voting for, as printed in the motions booklet, $387,111. This is a majority vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion carries, and I so declare. Article 14 is the adoption of an animal control bylaw. I recognize Mr. Ascalillo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to amend the general bylaws by inserting a new section, 14.6, Animal Control Bylaw, as written in the motions booklet.
Is there a second? Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. Now, before I recognize Susan Provenzano to speak to this, I would just like to point out to the meeting, we discussed earlier in response to Ms. Bishop's question, that sometimes there are minor differences between what's in the warrant booklet and what's in your motions handout. At this point, the motions handout is what controls. In this case, there was a sentence added to the motion that was not in the original warrant book. So I just want to point out—that out to you. It's on the bottom of page 14. Section 14.6.2.4, the control provisions, the very last sentence there, which says, "Regardless of the method of control described in section 14.6.1.2, when off the owner's or keeper's property, an owner or keeper shall carry one leash per dog, coupler leashes permitted at all times on their person." So this is—this is part of the motion. I just wanted everyone to be clear that you're aware of that. Ms. Provenzano, I recognize you to—
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Susan Provenzano. I'm co-chair of the Dog Control Committee, and I'll be giving an overview of the Dog Control Bylaw. The Dog Control Committee was created last spring by the Board of Selectmen due to public complaints about dogs. It consists of these six voting members and two non-voting members, whose input was invaluable. Our first meeting was last April, and then we had 10 other meetings, of which two were geared specifically towards the public's input on the proposed bylaws at that point. The Board of Selectmen asked the committee to evaluate the need for action in these five related areas. The current dog population this year in Carlisle is 551 licensed dogs. The existing bylaws were last overhauled in 1990, and they provided little guidance to dog owners about the community's expectations for canine stewardship and behavior in public places. They also provided little recourse for Carlisle residents who have negative dog experiences. The committee first began by obtaining call data from the dog officer. This chart shows a 28-month period where there are 112 dog-related calls, most of which were loose, lost, or found dogs. While this is a high number, the dog officer feels that some of the calls were from people who didn't realize that there was no leash law in Carlisle, and the dogs, while loose, were in or near their own yards. The committee is also aware that there are probably unreported incidents that are not reflected in this table, but we wanted to try for a simpler solution before making a more drastic change towards a leash law. Then, we examined bylaws from other towns, such as Boxford, Dover, and Weston, for ideas, and then used the mass general bylaws as a base and adjusted the wordings and sections to meet Carlisle's needs. So then the important bylaw sections had to do with the annual licensing of dogs and stricter penalties. It seems that every year, the number of dogs licensed in Carlisle varies greatly. For example, in 2016, there were 619 dogs licensed. In 2017, there are only 493 licensed. And as this year, I said, there are 551. So some of this fluctuation can be due to death and families moving, but the dog officer on their calls often finds unlicensed dogs. Annual licensing is also required in Massachusetts to keep track of rabies vaccinations. The committee has increased the fees for licensing the dogs to bring them more in line with surrounding towns. Spayed and neutered dogs will go from $10 to $15, and intact dogs go from $15 to $20. We also hope to institute a $25 late fee for dogs that are not licensed before April 1st. And future—the committee also hopes to get the option of online licensing to make it easier for everyone. Strictly penalties for bylaw violations. Currently, the fees are nothing for the first offense, $15 for the second offense, and $25 for the third. We felt that that wasn't much of a deterrent, so we suggested the new levels of $50 for the first offense, but that can be waived by the dog officer, $150 for the second offense, and $300 for the third. The next couple slides cover the real significant changes. The definition of dog under control. When a dog is off its owner or keeper's property—or the property that it has permission to run on—is considered to be running at large. So owners need to have—use one of these above methods to keep their dog under control. So when off property, a dog has to be under control on some sort of leash held by the person, or actively monitored by the person in sight of its person, and that it immediately responds to a recall command. This recall command can be verbal, visual, or by an electric device. The committee debated keeping the dog in sight, but they felt that it was crucial because when you can't see your dog, you really don't know what's happening. And it's for the safety of not only other people, but the dog itself. For if the dog is out of your sight, you don't know if it runs into another person or animal, which could be scared by its presence, or you don't know if the dog runs into another animal, such as a bear, or a fisher cat, or a skunk, which could have negative consequences to the dog itself. So the committee felt that being in sight was an indispensable component of being under The other big change is commercial dog walkers. Many dog walkers use Carlisle's open spaces to walk multiple dogs. And currently, there is no way of knowing how many are used in Carlisle's open spaces, and no systematic way to communicate the town's expectations for canine behavior. So we'd like to have commercial dog walkers register with the police. There's no fee to register, and they would obtain a permit to walk up to five dogs at a time, and then a placard to be displayed in the car. Commercial businesses could receive up to three licenses, which they could rotate among their employees, and this would allow them to walk up to 15 dogs at any one—any one time, excuse me. Students who are residents of Carlisle are excluded from this requirement, but can only walk two dogs, and we hope that this would alleviate a student who happened to take care of a neighbor's dog while they're away on weekend or business. Prolonged barking is now handled under section 157 of the Massachusetts General Laws for nuisance dogs, so the committee didn't feel the need to address that. There is a section requiring dog owners and keepers to clean up after their dogs when off their private property—or again, the property where the dog has permission to run. And then finally, the dog officer. I've been referring it to the dog officer, because we've all known this dog officer, but Massachusetts no longer recognizes that term, and the new title is Animal Control Officer, or ACO. So the ACO's responsibilities are to keep a written record of complaints and investigations, and in order to help that, the committee looked at ticket books from various towns and came upon tooth sprays, which we thought best fit Carlisle's needs. They also need to keep a log of calls and report that in summary form to the Board of Selectmen quarterly. Most of this is done already, but now it is officially in the bylaws. In sum, this bylaws create common sense measure that makes explicit our community expectations about dog behavior in Carlisle. The goal is to strike a reasonable balance between the needs and concerns of dog owners and non-dog owners alike, such that everyone can enjoy using Carlisle's open spaces. When there is a dispute or a problem involving a dog, the bylaw aims to provide enforceable means for correcting or addressing the issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and was this—this proposal had the unanimous support of the committee? Yes, thank you. Recommendation from Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen voted unanimously to support Article 14.
Thank you. Did Finance Committee have a recommendation?
No.
No, okay. Any recommendations from other town boards and committees? Yes, sir.
Yes, Recreation Commission voted unanimously to support the article.
Thank you. Melinda?
Melinda Lindquist, 83 Acton Street, for the Conservation Commission. We voted unanimously to support this article.
Thank you. Any other town boards or committees? I'm sorry, from Recreation, could you identify yourself, please?
Drew McMorrow, Concord Street.
Okay, Drew McMorrow. Thank you. Okay, the floor is open for debate. Back at microphone three, please.
Peggy Wang, 30 Robbins Drive. I just have a question. In the handout, it talks about a fee for commercial dog walkers, and that it would be an annual fee, and the license or permit issued by the Board of Selectmen. In the presentation, it said there would be no fee, that it would be handled by the police department. I'm looking at page 15.
Yeah, I believe that's incorrect. There shouldn't be a fee.
I'm sorry, so, the—what are you saying is incorrect? You're saying the handout.
The handout is incorrect.
So which handout? Are you referring to the informational handout, the one-pager?
It's on page 15.
In the warrant?
The motions booklet.
And which section are you referring to?
Section 14.6.4.1.
4.1.
Commercial dog walkers. So it refers to a fee, and that it's through the Board of Selectmen, and it's an annual. But I also—
Okay, so what this—so the—you're saying—you're looking at the last line?
Yeah.
That says, "The fee for such permit shall be established by the Board of Selectmen."
Right, and in the presentation, it said there'd be no fee.
We'll make the fee $0.
So, okay, so just to be—just to be clear, the bylaw, as it is proposed here, says that a fee may be set. Correct? Am I correct in that reading?
Correct.
Shall be set. The Board of Selectmen have not yet set a fee, because the bylaw is not yet in place, correct?
Correct.
And Mr. Ascalillo says that, at least on behalf of the current Board of Selectmen, which may or may not be the next Board of Selectmen after next week's election—
The law's gone tomorrow.
The current intent is zero, but—
Correct.
—as written, the next Board of Selectmen could impose a fee. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Is that clear now for you?
Yeah, clears it up, but I also have a question. When, you know, when two of my neighbors come to me and ask me to take care of their dogs at Christmas, am I now a commercial dog walker?
Nope. No, that's the whole thing. We want to—basically, it's if you're doing it for a fee.
Well, I mean, they're going to give me a few bucks for taking care of their dog over Christmas.
Well, are you going to claim it?
You talk about a fee—I—I think that that's—a—my point is, it's a little vague, and I think that, you know, you've done a really wonderful job, and in this area in particular, I mean, you're going to—you're going to say high school students, well, what about older women like me, who help out their friends occasionally, and they walk a dog? And they walk maybe three dogs at one time.
Yep.
According to this, I'd have to have a special permit. I wouldn't have to pay anything, but I'd have to go through the process.
No, you're not a commercial dog walker.
If I—I—I'm sorry, I thought that it said in here, if I receive any kind of compensation, I'm a commercial dog walker if I'm walking someone's dogs other than my own. So I was just looking for clarity, and I—
So, okay, let me try to clarify your question, and then either Mr. Ascalillo or Ms. Provenzano can answer it. So really, the question is, what is a commercial dog walker? Is that defined in this bylaw?
Yeah, 14.6.4.
14.6.4.
This is commercial dog walkers.
But specifically, is there a definition that says—
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
What does the term "commercial dog walker" mean?
It is—
Does it mean a person engaged in the business of exercising or handling dogs owned by another, using public land, and who receives compensation for this work? Yeah, provided, however, that this definition shall exclude elementary, middle, high school, and college students who are Carlisle residents providing dog walking services for a fee. Such persons shall be prohibited from exercising or handling more than two dogs on the basis. So, yeah, I mean—
I'm not a high school student or a college student. I wouldn't—I wouldn't be giving some money for that compensation. I'm being engaged for that.
But you are not in the business of commercial dog walking, so—
Okay, I'm sorry. It's unclear to me in the way that it's currently written, and because of that, I don't support this.
Okay, so just—we've got a two-part definition that says you have to receive a fee and be in it as a business, and the—I think the point is that what does it mean to be in a business? May or may not be as clear as Ms. Wang would prefer. Okay, other comments on this? Yes, please.
My name is Susan Hanson. I live at 520 Lowell Street, and I am a Carlisle dog owner, and I'm all for all these responsible things that have been proposed. However, I also work for Walden Pet, which is a local dog walking service in Concord. And we come to Carlisle to walk Carlisle dogs. We don't bring dogs in from Boston, you know? We don't walk 12 dogs at a time. We're very responsible, and we walk max three dogs at a time, and usually, it's because the three dogs live in the same house. And my concern is, with this limitation as to how many licenses you give to a dog walking service, I feel that—I'm concerned for the dog owners of Carlisle because it's very limiting. If we only have three licenses, then what if we're very busy and somebody needs a last-minute walk? Their schedule changes at work, they need a last-minute walk, we can't service them. Or if somebody gets sick or has an emergency, and how easy is it to grab the license from one of the other employees to send somebody else in? It just seems like if we're walking Carlisle dogs, these are dogs that— It just seems like if we're walking Carlisle dogs, these are dogs that their owners would walk them if they could, and their owners are being very responsible in taking care of their dogs when they can't walk them, that they hire us to walk them, so the dog gets taken care of. I'm just wondering if either that limit could, Carlisle dogs that are being walked by a commercial dog walker could be excluded from the limit? Or if we had to maybe have more licenses per company? Because, you know, I know, who cares about a dog walker? Who cares about an out-of-town dog walker? Well, the fact is, is that we, our company comes in to walk Carlisle dogs. So if something happens that we can't service the dog, then the losers are the Carlisle dog owner. And I just would like somebody to address that.
Okay, we may come back to that. I won't have anyone answer it just at the moment. Let's get some more discussion. We'll take microphone three, then two, then four.
Heidi Herring, 322 West Street. This is just a quick question. Want to understand, as it's written, when we come to a vote, it's either we vote on this as it is, and if it passes, these all go in place? If it goats down, then is it the laws or lack of their laws that we have in place now?
So if it's voted up, then we have it. If it's voted down, then the situation remains as we have it today? Anyone always has the opportunity to amend it if they don't like some provision and think it could be improved. Not that I'm inviting that, but it's always your right. At microphone two, please.
This is Drew Kissinger, 481 Curve Street. I have two comments. One is, I'm so glad that there are commercial dog walkers and dogs enjoying our conservation lands. Somebody's out there enjoying it, that's fantastic. Those dogs have a wonderful time, I'm sure. My second comment is, dogs at large are a cherished, wonderful part of Carlisle's community. I've been in this town for, on and off, for 30 years. Having the neighbor's dog stop by to have, show his or her particular viewpoint on the natural world, and whether they like snacks or belly rubs, is a really important part of my Carlisle experience, and I'm sure many of my neighbors. So I just want to be an advocate for the dogs at large. They're wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cruz?
Brian Cruz, 71 Rogers Road. I do own a dog. We definitely enjoy running the trails. But I also recognize that not everyone is a dog lover, and not everyone is comfortable around dogs. I can say that I don't have any problem with the idea that your dog should be able to be recalled upon command. I also have no problem with the fact that you have to maintain visual eyesight with your dog. Every time we go on the trails, as soon as she gets near a corner in the trail, I call her back immediately to make sure that we go around together. I think that's just responsible and courteous of anyone else that might be on the trail. So I have no problem with any aspect of the proposed bylaw with respect to how you have to maintain control of your dogs when out in public. Of course, if there's ever a proposal in the future, or if there's amendment here to require a leash law, that might be a different story. But I do want to echo the concerns that were raised regarding the number of licenses or permits, I don't remember what they're called, with respect to the commercial walkers. I actually use Walden Pet. I think they're a fantastic service. And I have, on many occasions, due to work circumstances, last minute, asked them to change things around, so my dog can get a walk oftentimes the day of. So I don't want to punish the good ones and get concerned that a limit on the number of licenses that are allowed effectively requires more companies to come in that may not be as good, either for the dogs or for the community in terms of how they operate. So I guess, with that being said, should this pass today, I would just, my understanding is that moving forward, there's still going to be continuous review of these issues, and that this isn't final. So if this does pass, I would just urge that, at the very least, continuous review be done in terms of what is the practical number of permits that an individual commercial company can have? Because three seems low to me, and I don't necessarily think raising it slightly would cause any of the issues that are concerned about and that are trying to be addressed in this bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you. At microphone five, please.
Hi, I'm Peg Schaefer, Heald Road, 67 Heald Road. I too advocate open roaming puppy dogs and cattle and cows, and this is why I moved to Carlisle, okay? And I understand that some people are very frightened, and that's very sad, and I will be happy to work with anyone to overcome those fears. However, I had a dog named Maggie, who was a very submissive dog, and Bob Dennison, God rest his soul, who was dog officer for God knows how many years here, knew my dog never caused any problems. But because she was so submissive, other dogs would attack her. And then, one time, somebody reported my dog for attacking their dog when their dog attacked my dog. And the problem is, with the current bylaws, is that there's no recourse for the innocent dog. There really isn't. I took a very careful reading, and it's, "Your dog's in a fight, boom, you're dead." So I think there's many good things here, but let's fix it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Further comments? Mr. Friedman?
David Friedman, Hutchins Road. First, I'd like to commend the committee for drafting this bylaw, acknowledging how difficult it is. Leash laws are apparently the third rail in town government these days, as demonstrated by Concord just passing a non-binding referendum to suspend all dog licensing requirement, or dog control requirements. And therefore, I think it's important that we view this as a first step, and I commend them on not making this any more restrictive than it is, such that we don't have a vast outcry from dog owners here. Also, as a person who has brought bylaws to town meeting, I am very aware of what it means to propose an amendment to a bylaw at town meeting when people have put so much effort into it. But I am convinced by the comment by the dog walker, the dog walking company from Concord, and I think that, given that these are licenses, I presume they can be revoked or don't have to be granted. And so I would propose an amendment to Article, to the section 14.6.4.2, to increase that number from three to five. So it would read, "No more than five commercial dog walker licenses will be issued to any one dog walking business." Because I'm confident that if a company comes in and is abusing that provision, that they can have their licenses revoked or not be given any further ones.
Okay, so let me be clear on what the amendment is that you are proposing. So section 14.6.4.2, which starts at the bottom of page 15, and you want to amend the last sentence, which is at the top of page 16, to change the word "three" to "five" so that it reads, "No more than five commercial dog walker licenses will be issued to any one dog walking business."
Yes, that is my motion.
That is your motion. Is there a second?
Second. Any-
I'm sorry? The clerk has questioned whether that needs to be in writing. So just to clarify, another piece of procedure, my rule is that I do expect amendments in writing, except when they are extraordinarily simple, one-word changes, such as this one. So thank you for providing it in writing, but I wasn't actually going to require it. That is actually covered in the arcane sections of what's available on the website. Okay, so we do have a motion for an amendment on the floor, so we're now on the amendment and not on the main motion. Let me, we're debating the amendment, please.
Absolutely.
Liz Bishop, 291 Kimball Road. With all due respect to David Friedman, and thank you for getting such a well-written bylaw proposed tonight at town meeting. Thank you very much. I would like to address Mr. Moderator and point to section 14.6.4.4. I'm referring to page 22 in the warrant book. This is the section that states, "The Board of Selectmen may adopt and periodically amend rules and regulations to effectuate the purposes of this section," 14.6.4 of the animal control bylaw. 14.6.4 is the commercial dog walker section, so Mr. Friedman may not have to propose his amendment at this time, because the power then reverts to the Board of Selectmen to make any adjustments as needed.
Nope. It has to do with rules and regulations. You can't change a bylaw without the vote of town meeting.
So I take it you're not withdrawing? Okay, Mr. Cruz was up first.
Given the fact that that completely addresses the one concern I had, I am in favor of this amendment. There's nothing that I can see that would in any way alter the thrust of or facilitating the addressing of the concerns that was intended by this bylaw by increasing the number of licenses from three to five. If it's a responsible company, it's a responsible company. If they're walking Carlisle dogs, they should be able to do so and help the residents of the town. And if it's a problem company, they can have their licenses pulled, and that should be the effective way of addressing a problem company.
Okay. Before we proceed, I'd just like to check with the committee to see if the committee has a view on this amendment. Mr. McMaro, were you on the committee?
I was on the committee, but you want us to take a vote right now?
If you're not ready to, that's not, I just wanted to see-
Let me speak to this, though. So Drew McMaro, Concord Street, Recreation Commission and the Dog Subcommittee. The origin of this whole section that we're debating has to do with a problem that we've been having of out-of-town dog walkers bringing primarily out-of-town dogs, we believe, into Carlisle to let them run free primarily in the Banta Davis land, to relieve themselves and to leave the waste to Carlisle, and it's, you know, is our problem as opposed to theirs. So by limiting and restricting and regulating commercial dog walkers, we think we can get a handle on this problem and provide some means of enforcement, even though we know this problem was going on. Whether three is the magic number of licenses that we should allow, or five, my guess is we're probably not going to get too much compliance with this law, except by a very good firm like Walden Pet, who I also use. But at least we'll have some means of enforcement over those that don't comply. So that's the point of the provision. I don't think that, you know, as a one-committee member, five is fine with me.
Okay, sir.
David LaGrane, 127 Sunset. Probably know me by screaming the word Atticus, because he's crazy and all over the neighborhood. But anyway, just a question, is the firm Rover.com the company, or is the individual dog walker the company? Who would you grant the license to?
Who would like to answer that question?
It's an interesting question. I mean, yeah, it would be the individual, yeah. It would have to be the individual in that case, because I mean, I don't know what Rover.com is, but is it basically a way to link up a commercial dog walker with a dog? You'd have to give us more information as to what Rover.com is.
So let us, let me try to pose a slightly different question. And we don't know who Rover.com is, but let us say, we've had a company identified in the debate, Walden, and we have someone who has identified herself as a walker for Walden. If someone comes in and fills out an application that says Walden, who gets the license?
Counsel's back there, that's why. Because the idea is that, so I would assume Walden, because the idea is that they can pass it off between walkers.
Okay, and if the individual dog walker came in and applied under her name, who gets the license?
It would have to be under that individual's name.
Under that individual's name.
Yeah. Yeah, part of this, you know, part of this whole thing, you know, we kick the number around back and forth. Ultimately, it doesn't matter if you have one, or five, or 20. If it's a responsible company, there's never going to be an offense. Do you know what I mean? So it doesn't matter how many you have. Really, ultimately, what happens is, you know, we had to throw a number out there, we picked three, and that's really kind of, you know, where we stayed. You know, if there is an incident, it doesn't matter if you have one, or five, or 20. They are going to get, you know, if one incident, it'll come to the board, you know, we can, it can be appealed, we can review the situation. If it's a one-off thing, it's a one-off thing. It's for these repeat offenders, you know, the out-of-town dog walkers that we think may be a problem. That's what this is really trying to address. So if they're, ultimately, if there's never an incident, there's not going to be an issue. Because that actually goes to the dog-at-large thing, too. If you enjoy your neighbor's dogs in your yard, don't call on your neighbor's dog. You know, I mean, it's really as simple as that. If you don't like your neighbor's dog in your yard, then it gives you an avenue to call and have some sort of recourse.
Okay, I'd like to try to move as quickly as possible to a vote on this amendment. But sir, you haven't spoken before, if you'd like to speak on this amendment?
Steve Hauser, 36 Daniel's Lane. Why don't you just give them permits to walk in Carlisle dogs? And give them like one or two licenses to walk out-of-town dogs, if that's what it is. All dogs should be licensed, so you ought to be able to tell if they're licensed or not, if they're from Carlisle. That's what we're really worried about. It's a simple problem.
Yeah, if people license their dogs, because we did kick that around, you know? I mean, there are people who have chips in their dogs, they don't even activate the chips. So it's really not a-
Okay, let's, we are running late here, so on the amendment, at microphone two, please.
On the amendment, Mike Saylor, 319 Stern Street. Besides the gentleman here who just tried to say that this was for out-of-town things, my reading of this section, when it says, "A commercial dog business," it seems that Walden would only have five licenses to walk dogs in Carlisle, and we've already had two people in this facility tonight that use them. I think that's very limiting for a commercial business to regulate, and I'm going to vote against the amendment, and then I would propose to make another amendment to eliminate that sentence.
So just to be, just to be clear, a license, as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, permits someone to walk five dogs at a time.
I'm not talking about how many dogs. I'm talking about section 14.6.4.2. The sentence that you have done this, it says, "No more than three commercial dog walker licenses will be issued to any one dog walking business." This amendment is changing that number to five, which I would propose that is probably insufficient for a business like Walden.
Yes, and just if I could go over the arithmetic with you here.
Yes.
So whether the number is three or five, let's just say five. So that means if a business has five licenses, at any one time, they can go and pick up 25 dogs in Carlisle, have them walked, return them, and then go pick up another 25, and then walk them for an hour, return them, and then go pick up another 25. So I'm just suggesting that as written, it is not quite as limiting as you seem to be suggesting.
Thank you for that clarification. However, it is time limited as to when a person can do. There's only five people that can be in town doing this, and for these kind of people that call up and say, "Help, I need emergency," you might end up having more than five dog walkers in town at the same time from the same business.
Okay, very good. So we're on this amendment. Mr. Friedman, do we really need-
Let's just keep in mind that Carlisle's a pretty small town, and, you know, I'm talking to the folks here, they seem to think that five is a good place to start, that she was the one that raised the concern, so.
Okay, fair enough. Let's move to a vote. This is on the amendment to change the last line in 14.6.4.2, which is at the very top of page 16 of your motions booklet, changing it from three commercial dog walker licenses at a time to five. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Vanessa, do we have any votes in the cafeteria? Are we still there?
We have two ayes.
Two ayes. Motion carries, and I so declare. Okay, we're now back to the main motion. Is there any further debate on the motion as it has now been amended? Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Doug Stevenson, 271 Cross Street. I'm just curious, did that amendment solve Mrs. Wang's issue?
No, it did not.
So do we have an amendment to do that?
We could if you...
I think she has a very legitimate concern about just friends, helping friends, and at some point being qualified as commercial.
If it's one or two words, you're welcome to make it from the floor. If it's more elaborate than that, then we'll need it in writing. Mr. Friedman?
I would suggest that operating a business is relatively clear, and that is the kind of thing that the selectman can deal with in rules and regulations to define what they refer to as a business, and I'm sure they can be sure that it excludes people taking a few dollars for taking care of a dog during the holidays, which doesn't strike me as being a business, and seems pretty clear, and I think the language is fine.
And we may want to also clarify that taking a tin of Christmas cookies in compensation is not the compensation that is meant. Mr. Stevenson, yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator. The language very specifically says, "And who receives compensation for this work?" So I'm not sure.
And.
So it's a, it's a, it's a two-part test, compensation and that it's a, and a commercial business, and Mr. Friedman has suggested that it would be up to the selectmen in their rules and regulations to define what is meant by business and what is meant by compensation. Any further questions? All right, I think we're ready to proceed to a vote. So we are now voting on the full bylaw as amended, to go from three to five licenses or permits for each commercial enterprise. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay, let me ask for a show of cards. Give everyone a second to paw through your papers. Got the cards? I'm sorry, what was the question? Well, we are voting on the entire Article 14, as it has been successfully amended to change the number of licenses allowed for each commercial enterprise to five. So that has, that amendment has already passed, so we're now voting on the full motion as amended. All those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed? Okay, I think that, I know we only have two or three in the cafeteria, that won't sway it. Motion passes, and I so declare. So it is now 10:05, and we're only up to Article 15. I don't know how many of these are controversial. What is the sense of the meeting? Are you able to return here tomorrow evening, or shall we continue?
Continue.
Continue. Yeah, these should be quick.
Can I just have a quick show of hands, willing to stay? Want to adjourn and come back tomorrow? Okay, I think we have a willingness to stay, and I hope no one will call me to count whether we have a quorum or not. Mr. Brown, Article 15.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $15,000 to be expended by the Board of Selectmen to conduct studies, provide services, and facilitate projects as printed in the motion's handout.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
And I would ask people who are leaving to please be as quiet as you can. We have a motion in a second. Mr. Brown, please speak to the article.
This article would permit special appropriations outside of the town operating budget for consulting
Thank you for being brief. Recommendation of the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen voted unanimously to support this article.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee supports Article 15.
Any other town boards or committees? Okay, any debate? Okay, we're voting on the appropriation of $15,000 for Council on Aging, Assessors, and the Treasurer-Accountant. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries, and I so declare. Let me take 10 seconds to thank those of you who have stayed for being resolute and staying.
Mr. Moderator?
We will move as quickly as we can.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
The cafeteria is speaking to you. We would like to come back into the big room, can we?
You may certainly do so.
Thank you. Cafeteria is closed.
Objection?
And I know it is trite to say this, but thank you for your service.
Yeah, and just one quick other thing. There's a set of keys here, perhaps from somebody from FinCom, which is a Chevrolet keys, just so if someone's missing them, that's all.
Okay, the Chevrolet. I was going to say yes if it was a Tesla, but. Article 16, the Public Education Government Local Access Appropriation. I recognize Mr. Von Roskin.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $125,000 from the PEG local access receipts reserved for appropriation, special revenue account for the purpose of providing local cable access services, equipment, and programming for the town of Carlisle.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Von Roskin?
So our cable company Comcast takes 4% or so of the revenue, close to five, that they receive from public access or from cable programming, cable television programming, and gives it to the town, and it comes out to about $100,000 per year. And this motion allows us then to spend this money on public educational and government programming.
Great, thank you. Just to quickly, we had the Board of Selectmen voted unanimously, as did the Finance Committee, to support this. Recommendations of any other town boards or committees? Okay, any debate on this? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimously, and I so declare. No motion will be presented for Article 17. We therefore move to Article 18, which is the acceptance of a state statute which authorizes the town to establish speed limits. Mr. Ascolillo?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 90, subsection 17(c) and 18(b), which would allow the town to establish a speed limit of 25 miles an hour on any roadway inside a thickly settled or business district that is not a state highway, and would allow the town to establish designated safety zones with a speed limit of 20 miles per hour on any roadway that is not a state highway, as well as on state highways with the permission of the Department of Transportation.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. I recognize Chief Fisher to speak to this.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In brief, you've probably heard, or maybe you haven't, that we've tried to change the speed limits in Carlisle in certain areas to lower them to make it a little bit safer. This motion would not change those right now, but it definitely provides us the power to change our speed limits. It's a very arduous process. Some of you have worked with me in your neighborhoods in the past to try to get speed limits lowered, and they've been shot down at the state level. We need to adopt this so that the selectmen, when we work together with traffic safety, can choose speed limits that we think are appropriate. And that's my quick summary. I have the actual wording of how that goes, but will that suffice, Mr. Moderator?
That will suffice for me. We'll see if it suffices for the town. Thank you for being brief. The selectmen voted unanimously to support this. FinCom, no recommendation. Any other town boards or committees, a recommendation on this? Any questions or debate? Anyone? Okay, we can move to a vote then. All those in favor of Article 18 as moved?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
The motion carries, and I so declare. Article 19, capital funding for technology projects. Mr. Brown?
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 for the purpose of funding for technology capital projects.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Brown?
Yes, this article would continue funding technology projects at the town hall, which in recent years have included the relocation of Town Hall Data, the Town Hall Data Center to the school, a new website which will be launched in the next couple of months, and move to Office 365, plus upgrades to the assessor's software.
Thank you. Both the selectmen and FinCom voted unanimously to support. Do we have recommendations from any other town boards or committees? Seeing none. Floor is open for debate. Debate, comments, questions? Yes, go ahead, please.
Casey Hurley, 1170 Westford Street. Would any of this money, or is there any money set aside, or would this be part of a fund to provide more online services for the town? Payments online, getting licenses online, things like that?
Did you address that, Mr. Brown?
Sure, so I am not a part of the committee, but that is precisely what this money is for. That's, you know, how we did the website. I think the thing to do would be to go to the committee and talk to them about the types of things that you're thinking about.
Are there any other town officials, the administrator or treasurer, who want to speak to this question? You don't have to, I'm just offering, be helpful.
Carrie Colburn-Dionne, I'm the Finance Director, Treasurer, Collector. We can easily add online payments for departments. It wouldn't have to go through the committee. It would be me working with the department head, and if it makes sense to do that, we can add more online payments.
Okay, thank you for that answer. Any other comments or questions? Okay, we're ready for a vote. This is to authorize $25,000 for funding technical technology capital projects. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimously, and I so declare. Article 20 is the CPA Annual Recommendations. This article is actually split up into a variety of motions, but I will start with Mr. Ascolillo to make the main motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move motion one of Article 20 as written in the motion's booklet.
Is there a second? Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Ascolillo?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So motion one, as always, is the budget. I'll keep going until the slides pop up. So the budget this year is about $529,000. $475,000 was received as part of the tax, the CPA surcharge that everybody gets. The state match this year was pretty low, it was 11.5%, so that came in about $53,000. And then investment on our money sitting there was around $1,000.
Is that it?
That's your budget, yep. Yeah, oh, actually, I'm sorry, I can do this, too. But budget appropriation, so we do put 10% into each of the buckets. $52,900 goes into community housing, historic, and open space. The remainder, or I'm sorry, $2,500 goes into administrative expenses. That basically pays for the Community Preservation Coalition support that we get, and then the remainder goes into the reserve. So that number floats a little bit, depending on actual tax receipts and whatnot, but that should be about $367,800. Okay, so that, that's it.
Okay. So any, let's see, recommendations on this particular motion? Did the selectmen have a recommendation on this?
I think we voted on the whole.
Yeah, we voted, I think.
You voted to support the entire package, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And FinCom has no recommendation on? Okay. Recommendations from any other town boards or committees? Does Concom have a recommendation on this, or anyone else? Housing? Okay. Any questions, comments, debate on motion one? Okay, let's move to the vote. This is to appropriate the Community Preservation Fund estimated revenues for fiscal year 2019 as printed in the motion handout. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries, and I, by unanimous vote, and I so declare. Motion two, Mr. Ascolillo?
So I just, I want to do a quick summary of the fund balances. Is that okay, Mr. Moderator?
Sure.
All right. So the current fund balances for FY18, the reason this is important is because each of the next two motions are going to actually be taken out of this fiscal year, so fiscal year, so work can be started immediately. The Open Space Fund is about $4,500, historic is about $160,000. Community Housing has about $370,000. Undesignated has about $684,000. There's zero in the reserve. That was actually used to help the purchase of the property over on that 338 Bedford, no, it's not 338. What's the number? Bedford Road? The Woodward Land, that was done in the fall, so that's why the reserve is zero. 767. So the total right now we have available is about 1.2 million. So next fiscal year, so starting July 1, those $53,000, $52,900 will be appropriated in each of the buckets, and then the 367.8 will go into the reserve, which can technically be used, but we try not to, try to be a little fiscal conservative. So...
Need to make the motion on motion two.
I'm going to, yeah. So I move motion two of Article 20 as written in the motion's booklet.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. We have the recommendations similar to as before. Any new statements from town boards or committees? Mr. Levitan?
Mark Levitan, 105 Wolf Rock Road. The Housing Authority unanimously supports motion two B for the housing trust.
Thank you. Any others? Okay, any questions, comment, debate on motion two? Okay, we're ready to move to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimously, and I so declare. Motion three, Mr. Ascolillo?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move motion three of Article 20 as written in the motion's booklet.
Okay, and is there a second? Motion three is for $14,000 from the Historic Reserve Fund for the Carlisle Historical Society. I recognize Mr. Drew.
I'm president of the Historic Society. The society is a private organization, not to be confused with the town organization called the Historic Commission. Two years ago, the town meeting approved money for installation of a heat pump system in the Heald House, where we store and display artifacts relevant to Carlisle's history. And that system was installed in the summer two years ago. It's proved very satisfactory at controlling temperature and controlling especially humidity during the summer. What we're asking here is for an extension of that system, the addition, the former one air-conditioned and heated four of the rooms where artifacts are stored. We want to do four more rooms, which will complete that project, and that's... We want to do four more rooms, which will complete that project, and that's what the $14,000 is for. I request your support.
Thank you. So again, we have the selectmen supporting this. Recommendations of any other town boards or committees? Any debate on motion three, $14,000 for the Historical Society? Okay, another majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries unanimously, and I so declare. Motion four, Mr. Escolillo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move motion four of Article 20 as written in the motions booklet.
Thank you. Is there a second? Okay, we have a second.
Second.
And I recognize Ms. Verge to speak to this motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and I'm Angie Verge of the Conservation Commission. The Cranberry Boghouse was built 118 years ago as part of the early Cranberry Bog operations, and it's listed as a historic structure in Carlisle, located on Curve Street at the Cranberry Bog. Since 1985, it has been part of the town-owned Cranberry Bog conservation land. Since its construction, the Bog House has been used for storage of cranberry harvesting equipment on the ground floor and on part of the first floor. Since the 1980s, the general maintenance of this antique structure has been part of the agricultural agreement that the town has had with the Cranberry farmer. There is a small apartment on the first floor and a larger one on the second floor currently used by the farmer's agricultural workers, and those apartments are not rented out. This past December, the farmer informed the commission that the residents in the Bog House were having water supply problems. The existing shallow well is less than 20 feet deep, it's located in the Bog House basement, and because of limitations due to the low ceilings in the basement, the existing well cannot be deepened. The water supply has not improved, and it continues to worsen. To address this problem, a well drilling company was contacted and has supplied the commission with a bid to drill a new well and associated plumbing to connect the well to the existing water supply system. The total quote was $16,000. The site of the proposed well has been selected to be behind the bicycle racks near the rear of the parking area at the Bog House, and no trees will need to be removed. Maintaining occupants in this building is critical to the continued stabilization of this historic structure, providing everyday upkeep and maintenance, security for the building, as well as some security for the bog area itself. The Cranberry Bog is a very popular parcel of conservation land, and it's widely used, highly valued for its recreation and lovely vistas, and enjoyed by local residents and neighbors. In 2011, the town approved CPA funding of $165,000 to stabilize this building and update the facilities, and this was a strong signal that this structure is an important part of Carlisle's agricultural history, and that the town was committed to investing and maintaining it as a historic structure. Without a stable water supply, the occupants will need to leave the building, according to Carlisle's Board of Health agent. A historic structure left unoccupied could lead to the deterioration of the building, similar to the upsetting structural decline and ongoing vandalism that has occurred on Greeno Barn, near Greeno Pond. As we are finding from this example, it's very expensive to demolish and remove a deteriorated structure, so let's not see this Cranberry Bog House fall into the same predicament. Conservation Commission asked the town to approve these CPA funds so we can continue our commitment of maintaining this historical building as one of our town's treasures. Thank you.
Thank you. So, the selectmen are in support of this motion as well. Conscom took a vote on this?
Yes, we have voted unanimously to support this.
Okay, do we have any other town boards or committees that wish to speak? Yes?
Warren Lyman, 516 Cross Street. I'm a member of the Land Stewardship Committee, and first of all, that committee did discuss this and has voted to support this motion. I want to reiterate that...
Actually, we're just hearing the reports now. I'll give you a chance to speak in a moment. Are there any other town boards or committees? Okay, well then, Mr. Lyman, please. Sorry, we have to just follow the procedure.
Let me back up. First of all, this is one other building that is not under the purview or control of the Municipal Facilities Committee. It's under the control, it's a town building, but not a municipal building because its use is dedicated to the conservation purposes of this land, which, for the years that we have owned it, has been agriculture. And now, let me say further, I'm also a member of the Cranberry Bog Alternatives Committee, and for those of you who have read our recent reports, or the summaries of them in the mosquito, we have recommended to the town that agriculture be a major part of the future of this land, and that is helped significantly by having a functioning Bog House with this residential unit, and having a serious well, reliable domestic water supply as part of that building will help us keep agriculture at this site. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions, debate? Okay, seeing none, we can move to a vote. Another majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries unanimously, and I so declare. Article 21, to amend our existing temporary moratorium on marijuana establishments bylaw. To amend that, I recognize Mr. Gambino.
Thanks, Mr. Moderator. Let's make the motion first, right?
Yes.
So I move on the motion of Article 21 as written in the town law.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Mr. Gambino, please speak to it.
Sure. I'm here tonight to discuss the temporary ban on recreational marijuana establishments in the town of Carlisle. 2016, the state of Massachusetts voters passed a law that will allow the sale, cultivation, use of marijuana in the state of Massachusetts. Just this past March, they actually released the final regulations that stipulate how that sale, how the cultivation is going to happen. So of course, towns and municipalities across the state have not had a chance to react to that, to establish our own bylaws, to regulate that in our towns. So what I'm asking tonight is, right now, we do have a temporary moratorium on recreational marijuana facilities in the town of Carlisle. My slideshow didn't come up.
You didn't send me one.
Oh, I did. Okay, that's all right. I'll just wing it then, okay?
I don't believe you did.
It's all right. It wasn't a very robust slideshow, so I'll just have to wing it tonight, okay? So basically, the slideshow is going to show you guys the dates. In 2016, the law passed. In, it took them about two years to come up with the rules and regulations, so we established this temporary moratorium along with many other towns and municipalities across the state of Massachusetts. What we're asking for tonight is to extend it until June of next year, which is past town meeting, so that we have a chance this summer, fall, to write our regulations for the town. So the next steps that we're going to be doing is we're going to be reaching out as a planning board to get public input from the community, to gather enough information to write this bylaw. What do we as a town want to do? So in the meantime, we would like to ask you to vote yes on Article 21 to ban the recreational marijuana facilities that are used for cultivation, distribution, and sale of recreational marijuana. This does not affect medical marijuana. We already have a zoning bylaw in place for that.
Okay.
Sorry? Yes, through June 30th next year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we had a recommendation from the, what was the vote of the planning board? Did we have a planning board vote on this?
Jonathan Stevens, Maple Street, planning board member. The planning board voted six to zero in support of this article.
And we had the public hearing on this, and the report has been submitted to the clerk?
Yes, and there's copies of the public hearing that were on the table coming in tonight.
Okay, does anyone need the report read? No, okay, very good. That was the right answer. Board of Selectmen?
The selectmen voted unanimously to support Article 21.
Any other town boards or committees have a recommendation? Okay, and, let's see, this is, any debate on this?
David Legrand, 127 Sunset. I urge the committee to make a strong decision on this, a yes or no. I look at this as passing the buck. This article, though against principles of many people here and myself, could produce revenue for the city of Carlisle, so instead of just rolling this from year to year and extending the moratorium, I suggest you guys make a strong decision, a yes or a no, and move it forward. I'd like to see the revenue, I don't want to see the product.
Thank you. Yes, please.
My name is Adrienne Dean. I'm actually not a resident. Am I allowed to speak?
No, you are not.
Okay, thank you.
You would have to have someone who is a resident, I'm sorry, a registered voter, make a motion and explain why you should be allowed to speak. Any other comments from the floor? Okay, seeing none, we are ready to vote. This would extend the existing temporary moratorium through June 30th, 2019. Do we have that date correct? And this would be a two-thirds vote, because it's an amendment to zoning bylaw. So, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Because it's a two-thirds, I will ask to see your blue cards. Just wait a moment while people fish for them. Is everyone ready? Anyone not ready? Okay, all those in favor, hold up your blue card. Okay, anyone opposed? I would say that passes by more than two-thirds, so the motion carries, and I so declare. Article 22, a further town bylaw amendment. I recognize Kate Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 22 is to see if town will vote to amend Section 3.9.2 of the town bylaws as is printed in the motions booklet.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Reed, please explain the...
Yes. Last year, I was a newbie, a brand-new selectman, and I was reading through the town bylaws so that I would know what the heck I was doing, and I discovered that we had a town committee called the Long-Term Capital Committee, and we had three FinCom members on it, and our bylaw said that FinCom members could not serve on any other town boards or committees that had anything to do with money. So this obviously seemed to be a contradiction, and we need to fix that, because we really do want them to be serving on the Long-Term Capital Committee since they're so closely connected to those kinds of issues.
Thank you. So, we had unanimous recommendations in favor of this article by the selectmen and the finance committee. Do we have any other town boards or committees with a voting recommendation on this? Long-term caps have a vote?
Long-term caps did not vote.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, any debate on this one? Okay, yes, please. Please go directly to the microphone.
Sally Duchesne, 243 Brook Street. I think that there's a value to have long-term caps separate and distinct from FinCom. I think FinCom does a wonderful job looking at year-to-year daily things, but I'd like there to be a separate long-term caps that's looking at a much larger view of where our town is going.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or debate? Okay, let's take a vote. This one is a majority, I'm sorry...
Marjorie Johnson, 61 Ember Lane. I was just wondering how many people are on the Long-Term Caps Committee?
Seven.
Seven.
And three of those right now are FinCom members?
Three, so three of the current, of the seven, three currently are FinCom members.
Just a correction, two FinCom members currently serve on Long-Term Caps, two of the seven.
Okay, any other comments? Ms. Bishop? No, okay. All right. So this is a majority vote. Zoning is two-thirds, most other bylaws would be majority. So, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries by a majority, and I so declare. Article 23 is an amendment to the personnel bylaw. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to amend Article 15 of the Town of Carlisle General Bylaws Personnel Board Composition by deleting language indicated in the motions handout.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Brown, please explain this one.
Yes, so the Personnel Board currently consists of five people, and we have three members. If anybody would like to join, please contact the Personnel Committee. We had thought, what this does is it causes a problem for them to get a quorum, and it causes delays in trying to get through the issues that they need to address. We thought about reducing it to three members, but that just didn't seem right. One of the things in the bylaw is that if you serve on anything else in town, you can't be on the Personnel Committee, and if you're serving on something else in town, you're probably most likely to be willing to serve on the Personnel Committee, and so it just seemed to be eliminating a lot of people who might be interested in serving in that capacity. So that's why this change.
Okay, and we have unanimous support of the selectmen on this. Any other town boards or committees? Did the Personnel Board have a vote on this? Okay, any debate on this one? Please.
I'm Casey Hurley, 1170 Westford Street. I am one of the members of the Personnel Board, one of the three. I actually feel that this change could introduce a huge potential bias in the process of the Personnel Board. I have very strong concerns about that.
Please say more. Why are you concerned?
Me?
Yes.
Oh.
No, I mean, it's a, look, it...
Sure.
You have, you don't have to take the full three minutes, but if you've got serious concerns, you should say exactly what they are.
Without making specific allegations for specific people, which I wouldn't do, and I don't have specifically, for specific people, if a position description was brought forward by a certain committee, or a certain committee wanted more hours and justifications and things like that, I would have strong concerns that if the additional person or persons serving on the Personnel Board would be biased to vote for the changes in relation to their own committee, and even if they recuse themselves from voting for that committee, there are also concerns with the different committees. I have concerns that different committees might just have some sort of a system worked out between them, or that there's a possibility of that. Not that it exists currently, but that there's a possibility that it could exist. If you scratch my back, and I'll scratch yours.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Jonathan Stevens, Maple Street. I too share the speaker's concern about conflict of interest, just in a general sense, that it's very hard for anybody serving, making those tough decisions on the Personnel Committee if they have any interest in the people... if they have any interest in the people coming before them. And I would urge the selectmen to find other ways to raise volunteers for this, for the Personnel Board outside of the elected and appointed officials in town.
Okay, Mr. Gambino, did you want to speak?
Pete Gambino, Stony Gate. So I have a little bit of opposite opinion. We recently, in the planning board, did end up going through the process. The process took a lot longer because the quorum, it was hard to get a quorum with a three-person board. It's, the Board of Selectmen has been trying for years, I think, to fill these positions and unsuccessfully so. So the way the bylaw is currently written, if people were going to step up, it wouldn't have been years to fill two appointed positions. I do believe that in the motion, or in the article, it does refer to the conflict of interest law. I think the conflict of interest law should substantially protect us against people sitting on a board and trying to game the system by getting on the Personnel Committee just to do it. You've got to remember, too, that I don't think a lot of us are going to step up to make a long-term commitment to a board just to get one Personnel change through. It's not something we do really here in Carlisle. So my concerns are less about this. I don't think it's going to open us up to gaming. I think people would end up recusing themselves, and they wouldn't be able to preside in that part of the hearing. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Friedman?
I concur with Mr. Gambino. I believe that the people that are volunteering to serve on town boards are already showing a dedication to the town, and I don't see that it being as an issue that overrides the concern about not having a quorum.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Just one brief one. Ultimately, the selectmen still make the final decision as to whether or not a position is funded. It wouldn't be the Personnel Board. We accept a recommendation from the Personnel Board. So I just wanted to clarify that. I don't want to sway one way or the other.
Okay, Mr. Van Roskin?
I believe conflict of interest only applies to personal gain, which I don't think would really apply in this case.
Town Council, may I back me up on that?
Thank you, Tom Harrington, Town Council, Mr. Moderator. While the language does reference Chapter 268A, the state ethics law, in my opinion, serving on two committees, serving on the Personnel Board and another committee would not in and of itself be a conflict of interest. Most conflicts of interest arise out of a financial interest, and I don't see a financial interest exists in that case. Nevertheless, the language says you need to abide by it. We all need to abide by it. Thank you.
So just to be clear, then, you're saying that the bylaw as written and the conflict of interest would not require, say, a planning board member was on the committee and something came up on a planning board employee, they would not be required to recuse? Is that what you're saying?
That is correct pursuant to 268A.
But they could if they chose to.
If they chose to, they could.
All right. Okay, any further comments or questions? Okay, try to do this by voice vote. If we need to, we'll go to the cards. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Could I see your cards, please? All those in favor, please say aye. Okay, opposed. Okay, and actually, I'm sorry, I didn't get the, on the eyes, I didn't look back here. Can I see the eyes again? Okay, yes. Motion carries by majority and I so declare. Okay, Article 24 is a proposed authorized land transfer from the town generally to the Conservation Commission. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. There's not much. I move Article 24, the land transfer of parcels 4-23A-1 and 4-23A-3 to the Conservation Commission as printed in the motion's handout.
Okay, and is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Brown, please explain this one.
So this article transfers two parcels of land that were taken several years ago for the non-payment of taxes, and it places them in the custody of the Conservation Commission. Those, the parcels of other properties that are held in conservation by the Concorded Land Conservation Trust, and this allows the two to be one larger benefit for conservation.
Thank you. And the selectmen voted unanimously to support. FinCom, no recommendation, correct? Any other boards or committees vote a recommendation on Article 24?
Yes.
Do we have, yes?
Steve Smith, 132 Hartwell Road, a member of the Conservation Commission, and we voted, the Conservation Commission voted unanimously to support this article.
Thank you. Any other town boards or committees? Okay, any debate on this one? Okay, majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimously and I so declare. Now, I would move ahead to the last slide. There will be no motion made under Article 25. You just, we should have one more slide up there. So I do remind people, there is a survey you could take. We also have the election next Tuesday. I'd like to thank all the boards and committees and all the people who put in many hours to bring us here, and I will now entertain a motion to dissolve the 2018--
So moved.
--town meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I would ask all in favor to please vote by giving a standing ovation to our retiring